Members of council, the first order of business this evening is the adoption of the council minutes of September 20th, 2010. Motion by councillor Carrillo, seconded by councillor Maves. Any further discussion or comments with regard to the motion? Having seen none, all of us in favor, motion is carried, thank you. At this time, I'll ask for any disclosure of a pecuniary interest by any members of council. Councillor Wing?
I had a pecuniary interest in the in-camera matter.
Thank you. Councillor Idoni?
I had the same pecuniary interest.
Councillor Thompson?
We have similar conflict in the in-camera item.
So noted, thank you. Are there any others? Thank you very much, and we'll move on to deputations. This evening by members of council, we have a number of deputations. A number of groups are here, so we're going to ask you to bear with us, if you would, please. We do have some special guests tonight, and I'd like to welcome, first of all, Robyn Crandall, who's going to be acknowledged and recognized at council here for three gold medals at the Special Olympics National Summer Games, which were held on July 12th, 2010. Ladies and gentlemen, this summer Niagara Falls member of the Ontario Provincial Swim Team, Robyn Crandall, won an amazing three gold medals and stepped up to the podium a total of five times for the Special Olympics National Summer Games. Robyn won gold medals in the 25-meter freestyle, 50-meter butterfly, and 4-by-50-meter freestyle relay. She also swam her way to silver medal in the 50-meter freestyle and a bronze in the 200-meter freestyle. This was Robyn Crandall's first time competing in the national competition, which was held in London, Ontario during the period of July 12th to 18th, 2010. Robyn is now awaiting news to find out she has qualified for the World Games scheduled to take place in Athens, Greece next summer. Robyn Crandall continues to train at the McBanks Community Centre with accommodation of swimming, weight training, and cardiovascular exercise. And Robyn, on behalf of the members of council, we wanted to take a moment to acknowledge you, to tell you how proud we are of your accomplishments, and present this small token of our appreciation to you. Our second deputation, ladies and gentlemen, is involving the Niagara Falls Jacket Cellar Falcons Major Peewee Baseball Team, the Ontario Baseball Association Champions. Over Labor Day weekend, the Niagara Falls Jacket Cellar Falcons Baseball Team won the Major Peewee Ontario Baseball Association Championship. They're now celebrating back-to-back Ontario Championships. Last year, the team won the minor Peewee Provincial Championship, and they continue this year with the winning formula of great pitching, great defense, and timely hitting. The Niagara Falls Falcons Major Peewee Team had a successful season, winning the negative regular season and playoffs without a loss. They have a combined record of 24 and 0, scoring an amazing 341 runs, only giving up 27 runs. Quite a feat. The team finished with an overall record of 48, 10, and 1, which included 11, a record in the Boys' Summer League in the United States, and an undefeated 6-0 record to win the provincial championship. A truly amazing accomplishment for an amazing group of young boys. You can clap if you like. Congratulations again to the Niagara Falls Jacket Cellar Falcons as Major Peewee Baseball Team for this second Ontario Baseball Association Championship. I'm going to call up the team members, my quick, please. You kind of have to come forward and accept your token of our gift, sorry, our gift is a token of our appreciation, and just stand up here with me. I'm going to call Tyler Wood first, please. Alex Madavich? Daniel Small? Not here? Congratulations, Lucas. I want to move on to the coaches now. Amazing team with an amazing set of coaches. Head coach is John Gilz. Congratulations. The assistant coach is Bob Peicher. The other few assistant coaches are not with us. They are John Morris and Darren Small, so you can take those under title. And on behalf of the members of council, ladies and gentlemen, I just wanted to acknowledge this amazing team for their exceptional work, and I'd like to ask the coach to say a few words, please.
I just want to say thank you to the mayor and the council for acknowledging a tremendous group of young men. They've accomplished quite a feat, and besides being good ball players, they're all good, really good representatives to the city. So thank you very much for that. Congratulations, kids, and I just want to say that as coaches, we noticed one thing this year, just getting off topic, that the Parks and Rec did a phenomenal job for all the Diamonds and everything for hosting OBA's. It was truly a remarkable representation of the city, so I just want to thank them as well. So thank you very much.
My pleasure. Ladies and gentlemen, I have to say that I attended one of the games, one of the playoffs, actually, one of the, I think it was a competition you had, and it was a weekend competition, and we had comments from Toronto teams that said that our facilities were so impressive they hadn't seen the clay that they would see in our city and other places, and they were very impressed. So again, our hats go off to the staff, also to the players in such a wonderful, wonderful season they had. Congratulations, you've got some very proud parents here as well. Congratulations to all of you.
Thank you, worship. And if I could just add two comments. Number one, I had heard that a lot of the good things started after the first pitch was thrown, and I don't know who threw the pitch or anything, but I don't know if the coaches had anything to add to that. But, your worship, I'd like to just acknowledge also the fact that Bob Peicher, the president of the GNBA, this was his swan song, and I can't think of a better gift from the players and the coaches as Bob heads into semi-retirement. The team winning the championship this year, the OBA's, so special hand also to Bob for helping him.
Wonderful job, Bob. Falls Falcons Senior Rookie Baseball Team OBA Champions. Buckner's Source for Sports Niagara Falls Falcons Senior Rookie Baseball Team traveled to Tencsie over the Labor Day weekend to compete and win the Ontario Baseball Association Provincial Championship. In their first game, the Falcons faced the defending provincial champions from North London on a Friday afternoon, and they lost a hard, excuse me, a hard fought battle that was decided in the last inning by a score of 7 to 6. The Falcons went on to face Sarnia in Clarendon, and Niagara solidly defeated both teams with a balance of strong defensive play and explosive offense. The next day, the Falcons sent Richmond Hill packing, and they headed to the final round to face the same North London team that they had defeated, that had defeated them on Friday. Against North London, both teams made great defensive plays, but the Falcons were behind 2-0. Now, with one at bat, the Falcons scored two runs, forcing the game into extra innings. The Falcons went on to beat the North London squad 7-2 after one inning, extra inning. The second game was a stunning game for the provincial title. The Falcons bats became alive, and their stellar defense continued. The Falcons jumped to an early lead and never gave up a run after that. The Falcons defeated the North London team 15-5 after five innings with the mercy rule. That's amazing. Congratulations to the Ontario Baseball Champions, the Buckners, Niagara Falls Falcons, Senior Rookie Baseball Team, members again of the provincial championships. So I have done this. The team and their coaches are here with us, so I'd like to call them up, if I could, please. First, I'd like to call Mr. Leaf Russell. Familiar name? And Andrew Waters. First, I'd like to acknowledge the coaches. Coach, head coach is Ryan Diadadi. The assistant coaches are Bill Jackman. Ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to ask the coach, Ryan Diadadi, to say a few words and to extend our congratulations to him and your coaching staff.
I just echo John Gilz's sentiments. The city did a great job keeping our diamond in great shape, along with the Optimus Club. I also want to thank Bob Peicher. Again, he's been a great support to our team, both financially, making our diamonds available, getting us into the tournaments that we needed to get into, and supporting us through our winter training. My assistant coaches, endless volunteer hours since January. The parents are supporting both financially and emotionally, thrilled to hear, and most importantly, the kids. They never gave up. They worked hard from January right until Labor Day weekend, relentless practices, allowing them to listen to me yell, but they persevered, they persevered, and they came out on top, and I'm really proud of them. So, and thank you.
Any comments from members of council? Councillor Diadadi?
You know, your worship, I have to say something. I mean, it's my brother, my brother-in-law, I know most of the team and all the guys, my nephew. Very, very proud of them, especially, I think it's very historic, your worship, I don't think it's ever happened in the city of Niagara Falls. We've had three OBA Champions the same day, and it says a lot about the baseball program here in Niagara Falls. I think we're going to be hearing a lot more about excellent baseball players and kids getting scholarships because of the solid coaching, the discipline, and the talent that they have to work with. So, your worship, I congratulate them, very proud of them, and to Owen, I'd say, that a girl, Owen.
Falcons representing Niagara Falls Major Batminton Team, OBA Champions. I'll call the members in the chamber, please, if we could. The Niagara Falls Falcons, representing Niagara Falls at the 2010 Ontario Baseball Association Championships, had a weekend they will never forget. Over the Labor Day weekend, the Falcons Major Batminton Team won the 2010 Ontario Baseball Association Batminton Championships held in Thornhill Vaughan. In the double knockout tournament, after losing their first game to Stratford, they were forced to win six straight games to win the championship title. One of the most exciting games during the weekend was when the boys came from behind, trailing 8 to 1 against Stratford. It was the top of the second inning, and it looked like they were about to be mercy and thought this may be how they were going to end their season. Then, the catcher, team captain, and head coach were ejected. They were ejected for arguing a tough call at the plate, and there was a brief blackout in Vaughan. When the lights came back on, it seemed the entire team was sparked, and the momentum had changed. According to the coach, the boys staged a rally worth of a Hollywood script, scoring 3-1 runs in the third inning, and six more runs in the fourth inning to take a 10-8 lead before adding two more runs on a late hit to make it a 12-8 final. A clutch pitching performance ensured that the rally would stand, and their season was miraculously extended to Sunday against all odds. With little drum on Sunday, the team rolled out to the championship. They beat out Sarnia 8-0 in the morning, and Birchmont 19-3 in the afternoon, and closed out the tournament by winning 11-2 over Peterborough. The boys played their hearts out and enjoyed a weekend they'll never forget. They were all proud to wear the Niagara Falls uniform and thrilled to bring home the OBA championship. And once again, the Niagara Falls Falcons Major Batminton Team had a quite a year, finishing with a 43-20 overall record, 14-6 record in exhibition games, 8-6 records in the Boys' Summer League based out of Western New York. So I'm going to call the players forward, please. We've got a number of them here, and I'll call, first of all, Dan Tooth Beckiston. We'll call the coaches. The head coach, Randy Luciano. And finally, Paul Zepfer. Ladies and gentlemen, once again, we're very proud, and as members of council, we want to acknowledge you this evening with a small token of our appreciation. Congratulations on an exciting season. We'll call on the head coach to give us some comments, please.
First of all, I just want to say thanks to you, Mr. Selsey, and council recognizing us tonight. We had a heck of a season, as you just basically told everyone, our season right there in a nutshell. Two tournament wins, OBA championship, went to Sudbury for a week for summer games, and the kids had a lot of fun this year, hopefully come back next year, do a little again on another championship. Be back here next year.
Any comments by members of council? Okay, again, council, Diadadi.
Well, I've got to say something, your worship. Just remember, guys, you're right at that age where you've got to stay focused on ball, don't get distracted with the girls, because this is where a lot of you guys go astray, and you leave the sport. Stay focused, that's all I got to say, your worship.
If they don't stay focused, they might have a politics issue. Once again, congratulations, we're very proud of you. Great season, you represent us well. Members of council, we'll move on to unfinished business. We do have a matter, there was a motion made by councillor Thompson, seconded by councillor Fisher, to defer a motion to allow the BIA to make a representation this evening with regard to the issue downtown, a matter of some archways in the sound system, and the comments by the steering committee. I believe that Mr. Phil Ritchie is going to speak on behalf of the BIA, is that correct? Please come forward.
Please come forward.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Selsey, and members of council and senior staff. On behalf of the BIA, I'd like to present an update of some of the initiatives that are currently underway here in the city of Niagara Falls, in the downtown Queen Street district area. And before I get started, I just wanted to point out that I'm joined by a couple of dozen or so very passionate, interested stakeholders here in the Queen Street downtown district, and you'll see them in the audience here this evening. I'm going to pass out a short report that's been compiled by Toni Williams, at the BIA and her staff. It is, in my opinion, an absolutely wonderful piece of work, in terms of its completeness, in addressing some of the questions that have been surrounding this initiative over the past couple of weeks. It's going to talk about branding, it's going to talk about how to strengthen a region, strengthen a district, talk about some of the choices that we've made here on behalf of a steering committee, and the direction we've chosen, the path that we've been following. And there's a lot of first-level research that talks about examples in other areas, and how they plug in, and also some testimonials from principals in those areas. And you have that before you this evening. Congratulations, Toni, on a wonderful, wonderful piece of work. To backdrop my discussion points this evening, over the next several minutes, I have a small PowerPoint presentation, that if somebody that's technically unable could help me pop up, that'd be great. Is this it right here?
Yeah.
It's probably this one here, I'm left-handed, what do you know? Hopefully that's seen by all. So there's only seven or eight slides, I think, nine slides, that sort of will guide the talking points. And in terms of a brief format and agenda, we're going to talk about why we're doing this at all. And again, I think it's important to keep doing a checkpoint in terms of the guideposts that you're following, and why you're following them. We're going to talk about some processes that we've been following along the way as a collective, to ensure good decision-making, transparency, and value for dollar. We're going to talk about a decision that we made as a collective at the steering committee level, in order to help create a key part of this whole revitalization program, and that is creating a sense of place. And to do that, we've chosen to pursue, at this moment, and these are the three items that are currently underway, amongst others, are a series of arches, a sound system on the street, and of course, a live element to the street, which includes festivals and music on the weekends this past summer. Page down should work. Apologize for the small font. Most of you, I think, will be able to follow along with the spirit of what we're trying to convey. So that building, unfortunately, is one of ours, ours being, I'm speaking now with my HNDI hat on, that's the building that we happened to, but we didn't make it like that. It's been like that for a long, long, long time. I'm not sure there are any councils here that were even here when that building first started to slide in that direction. I'm just guessing at that. Regardless, that's the moment that we have, that's what we've been handed as a generation. We've been lucky in lots of ways as a generation of people, of leaders. We've avoided a lot of messes and issues, and terribly horrible, terribly tragic and difficult times that our forefathers have faced. But we do have one element here that we can do, and that is look after some of the economic messes that have been handed to us through obsolescence and neglect. So I guess, sort of a theme of this slide is, do we want to leave this situation to future generations? Because quite frankly, if we don't take dramatic, and decisive, and full action, that's exactly what's going to happen. But there's good reasons to do it, and good reasons why we should keep going. A vibrant downtown provides a sense of place, and a sense of pride, particularly for its locals. In effect, it can be the soul of a community. Vibrant downtowns are a tangible connection to the past. You can reach out, touch it, and feel it. It's a stage for lots of people to replay treasured memories in the community in their youth, in earlier days. But enough of the touchy-feely stuff, vibrant downtowns offer economically, economic opportunity. Employers are easily approachable. You don't have to work your way through some corporate hiring chain. You go knock on the door of a downtown business, and typically, the principal is right there. This is important to lots of our demographics, particularly our youth, in terms of getting first starts in the job market. It's often overlooked, but downtowns, vibrant downtowns, are a massive charity machine. They sponsor ball teams, they give to runs, they give to all kinds of fundraisers in the community. Very few viable vibrant downtowns have principles where the money's taken off and banked offshore somewhere. These folks are putting it right back into the community. Vibrant downtowns can be a tractor to help the community build itself in attracting all kinds of important professionals to the community. Lots of professionals want a strong, vibrant arts, culture, and culinary scene as an example, and a vibrant downtown typically embodies those elements. In a nutshell, vibrant downtowns can offer a high quality of life, improved quality of life, to residents of that community. They're also a great investment. We're leveraging existing infrastructure. The pipes are in the ground, the wires are in the air, buses stop by those facilities in most downtowns, all downtowns really, anywhere. Fire and police services are on the street corner. It's very inexpensive to go that next step and renew it. The infrastructure, the hard part's already there. There's a huge ripple effect of those revenues generated in downtown. The paychecks they spin out, the bills that they pay to suppliers and contractors, all go back typically into a relatively small geographic area, in this case Niagara. Talk about an investment for a municipality such as the city of Niagara Falls, what is the effect if we go ahead and pop that assessed value in a district like Queen Street on the tax base, and how that translates into tax revenues for the community, for the region, and for the province? It's enormous, and it's a relatively safe bet. Again, the investments are already there. A strong downtown can help lessen societal costs of crime, and other social regressions that we have to all pick up through our tax dollar at some point along the way. Now, these aren't all our buildings, HNDI hat again, but a couple are. But we cannot afford to leave this piece like this. Some of you might know that picture. It is right smack dab in front of the bus station, it's right in front of the GO terminal, our primary link to the GTA, and that is what we're showing our visitors. What is the cost of showing that look? I don't think it's very good. A quote here by a downtown enthusiast, a person that lives in downtown, in his words, sums it all up. It's pretty straightforward. "We're proud of what downtown has become so far, and it's continuing to evolve to." So how did we get to the decision to pursue arches, music, and festivals? Well, it wasn't simply a whim, it wasn't simply an idea pulled out of the air. In fact, I would submit to this council that there has been very effective stewardship of your investment dollars, through a steering committee that was formed by Niagara Falls City Council. It's been well-resourced, well-attended, by the BIA, by Celebrate Old Downtown, by city councillors and staff. This is a group of high-level stakeholders, and they've been responsible for providing guidance, input, and overall direction. It's a very active group. At the moment, we're down two people, simply because of job relocations. But we need to keep going. And we like to have these meetings open for all councilors to attend, at their desire, and we'll follow the council notification and required process that this change would entail. No trouble, and not at all. So here's what this group's come up with. The first point, and it's absolutely critical that you accept this, because I've spent the last eight or 10 years thinking about it, and I know a lot of others in this room, and outside this room have as well. There's no science to creating a vibrant downtown. There just is no absolute formula. There's guideposts and principles that make sense, and are well-accepted. There's lots of examples of successful downtowns, but it is an art, it's not a science. The solution to any downtown is always site-specific. All areas have different strengths, and markedly different challenges. We do know one thing, that if you're going to create a vibrant downtown, people have to feel connected to that space. They have to feel like they want to be part of the space, and that it's important to them. If it's not important to them, if they don't feel connected, it's not going anywhere. So how do you create that sense of place? Well, it happens at a lot of levels. It happens in the physical, has to look nice. It happens in the intellectual, has to make sense, has to work in your own minds, in your own context of what's important. It has to have a spiritual side to it. In a sense, it has to feel right. You have to feel safe, you have to feel like you're in good value if you're going to participate in that environment. And then hopefully, at the end, it also gets this little thing that we haven't really quite figured out how to put in a bottle yet, and that's that funk or vibe of a vibrant
All right, so, do you like the arches?
Yeah, I love the arches. I go to McMaster, but before I came to Hamilton to live, I drove past them, and I just thought, you know, this would be a really neat place to live. It kind of had an element of community, and it was really welcoming, just by the look of them. So, yeah, I was really excited to come to Mac after that, and...
Do you think it's a waste of taxpayers' money?
No, I don't think so. I think it adds something special to the city that we can kind of call our own, and the university students that come here can...
The questions are always the same, I'm sorry for the audio. What do you think of the arches, and do you think it was a waste of taxpayers' money?
So, do you like, tell me what you think about those arches.
It makes, it's a little more distinctive-looking, especially in that type of wrought iron. It makes, accents the buildings, accents the, say, the brickwork.
Do you think something like this would be a waste of taxpayers' money?
No, I wouldn't think so.
Good, okay. So, what do you think about the arches?
The arches are nice. They kind of class up downtown. And, you know, it stands out, definitely, from the rest of the city. Like, you can drive by and definitely notice that they're there, and...
Do you think something like this was a waste of taxpayers' money?
No, not at all. I mean, like, you've got to be proud of your city, right? Something that looks nice, and, you know, classes it up, and makes you proud to be from Hamilton, you know?
Thirty seconds or so more.
Okay, so, what do you think about the arches?
I like them. I think that they add class to Hess Village.
Yeah?
Yeah.
Well, it's actually less than thirty seconds.
I do.
Do you think it's a waste of taxpayers' money?
Uh, no, not at all. I think that aesthetics are important in the city.
Okay, so what do you think of the arches?
Oh, this is a beautiful arches, and this makes the beauty for the, you know, the Hamilton city, and as well as the Hess, especially Hess area is to be, they need like this. So I think so, the more like this is to be wonderful for the, you know, city, and increase the beauty of the city.
Do you think it's a waste of taxpayers' money?
Uh, no, not at all. It is the cultural thing, and it should be, you know, it should be appealing to other people to come more in the city, and they will be, it will be encouraging for the people to come in city, too.
Okay, so what do you think about the arches?
Uh, like, there's a nice touch to the city. Makes it look a little nicer than just, you know, the cobblestone or whatever it is, just gives it a little class, I guess.
Right, and do you think that this is a waste of taxpayers' money?
Um, you know, if you're trying to make your city a better place, you know, anything that makes it look nicer and attracts more people to the area, I don't think it's a bad thing.
That video is thanks to Toni's great idea, and young Brock, Brock student named Robert McMenon, who went out there with an iPhone four on the weekend, and went up to Hess Village. I'm sure most of you have been to Hess Village before, especially in the summer. Just a wonderful dining and entertainment district, and has a really wonderful feel to it. So, of course, that's not the only spot that has arches, and I just have a couple of other locations. It's important, I think, certainly if this room hasn't seen other sites that have arches, to get a sense of the effect. And again, thanks to Toni's initiatives, she's gone out and requested comments from the people that you'll see noted. This is Columbus, Ohio, and I won't bother reading the whole piece, although maybe, Mr. Selsey, Mayor Selsey, if you don't mind, are viewers at home able to read, are they seeing this?
Yes, they can see it.
Okay, wonderful, thank you. Makes a great difference in that community, without question.
Take your time reading.
Take your time reading, sure. The arches have definitely become the trademark of Short North. They are showing up in ad campaigns, logos, and tourist photos. The arches do say to the locals, and to the new visitor, that this is a neighborhood worth exploring, from top to bottom. And that's from Maria Galloway, who's president of the Short North BIA, one of Toni's counterparts. This slide's a picture from Russell, Manitoba. "The arches have proven to be a positive attraction to the town of Russell in creating a tourist attraction. With recreation tourism being a very valuable part of our business sector, and beneficial to the development of our increasing tourism, we, the Russell and District Chamber of Commerce, would like to show our support." And that is from a fellow named Ray Elliott, who's a president of that Chamber of Commerce. Again, you can see a different style of arch, and I think it looks absolutely inviting and wonderful. I wouldn't mind going to this myself, to be honest with you. London, England, Carnaby Street, a series of arches, and this picture's showing how they are decorated for different seasons. You have the snowman Bonhomme-type character for winter, and other decorations being hung for different festivals. And again, that's entirely intent of the BIA, is to use the arches as a delivery medium to convey a message, and what a wonderful and powerful attractor that will be. I think it's important here, because we are on the precipice of an absolutely important change for the downtown here on Queen Street, is to include a quotation that was offered up by Dino with respect to the Winter Festival Lights. And as you know, we have a partnership, a relationship now signed with WFOL. It's absolutely critical to the downtown, it's going to bring, we think, fifty thousand cars, a subset of that number of cars is how many they actually have at the festival, as well as potentially up to a hundred and fifty coach buses will come down the street. I cannot stress enough the importance of archways, the archways have in the big-picture relationship, the festival and downtown board of management are creating. Working in partnership with the DBM, the festival plans to introduce Queen Street to be identified as Santa's Village, as a significant addition to the CAA Winter Festival of Lights, which undoubtedly take it from being the largest winter lights festival in Canada, to becoming the foremost winter illumination festival in North America. And that's signed by Dino Fazio, the general manager of the Winter Festival of Lights. Wonderful opportunity for this district to move itself up dramatically, particularly in a difficult season. Let's talk about sound systems. Another piece of the expenditure that was approved here at this council, and is currently underway to be facilitated for installation. This is a slide taken from downtown, the downtown Collingwood website, a quotation offered up by the BIA manager of Collingwood. Again, thank you to Toni for doing such wonderful research and homework. "We have had an outdoor sound system on our main street since the early 1980s. We have found it beneficial in animating the downtown shopping district, and creating a conducive atmosphere for consumers. It has also been used to create a specific-themed atmosphere during special events, such as the Collingwood Elvis Festival." Susan Nicholson, GM, Collingwood BIA. Downtown Chatham, same story, in terms of music adding to the feeling, the flavor, the sense of place for the downtown. "Overall, the system has proved useful, and we hope to make some changes to the system in order to increase our usage with music during business hours year-round." The quote went on to say, and this is actually from the Chatham BIA person, I apologize, his name is John, oh, John Leeson, it is in here, sorry. He went on to say that if you're considering a sound system for your downtown, I would highly recommend using a wireless speaker system. It gives you the ability to have consistent sound throughout your downtown core, with a lot more flexibility. A few pictures, I'm sure you were all there, talking about our festivals component. Again, our three-pronged approach in 2010 to try and ignite this district as a viable, vibrant downtown. And it was a very successful event, and hats off to the organizing committee, and all of you that participated here, and also your viewers at home. The music festivals during the weekends, we think accomplished a significant amount of foot traffic increase to the downtown. And here's a quotation that was offered up by a fellow that was here from Barry. "This weekend was a great weekend for bands. Eagles Tribute to Hotel California was so awesome, they sounded and played just like the real thing. And by the way, it was easy listening, not so loud, and it was very well-attended." Nice quotation from a visitor to this city. In terms of numbers, we've been doing our homework as well along the way. The events have had an impact on foot traffic, has been a successful launch series, with an increase in traffic of fifty-seven percent. So, this evening, we've talked about the three elements that we think will help create a sense of place, and put us on a path, a multi-stakeholder path, to revitalize the downtown Queen Street district here in Niagara Falls. I want to thank you on behalf of the BIA and all of our stakeholders for your continued support on a path that's important to a place that will be incredible. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Ritchie. I'm going to ask Mr. Counselor, just a few points that I should mention as well. I had the opportunity to meet Mr. Bruce Druckerman the other day. Mr. Druckerman is the principal behind Fifty-Five Druckse's Delis, and we're pleased to welcome Druckse's to our Queen Street. They'll be opening soon, and members of council, I think, have been invited already. Just recently, last week, I received an invitation that's been extended throughout the city hall. We are pleased that, as well, Mr. Ritchie, we had welcomed twenty-three new businesses downtown last year, and I appreciate your very strong spirit of optimism, and we do have a number of the businesses here. I've always acknowledged them as those people who've made that commitment to improve our downtown. You've taken the chance, you've put your money on the line. The BIA itself has raised in the last couple of years, every year, in excess of four-hundred-and-fifty-thousand as a budget for your own expense that you've been spending and levying on your own members. So you have put your money where your mouth is, and I appreciate that. So I'm very proud that... So I'm very proud that, uh, you've done an excellent job. Your partnership as well with the Winter Festival Lights to create, uh, Santa's Village downtown is exceptional. You're gonna have, I think, fifteen hundred buses traveling through our downtown. It's planned for that period of November through January. So I think the business people should brace themselves, get the candy canes and the ice cream cones ready. So I'm sure they'll enjoy themselves. But, Mr. Ritchie, do you want to make any other, other comments with respect to the Winter Festival Lights?
Not really, no.
Okay, we have members of council wish to make some comments, so, uh, Councilor Thompson?
Uh, yes, this is, uh, I, I see you've been complimenting, uh, Tony Williams, uh, throughout the evening for, uh, this, uh, information. Uh, the slide presentation was, uh, without exception, uh, extremely informative and, uh, I really enjoyed that. I wish I had have, uh, had this a little earlier, uh, on the arches, but I think you hit a lot of that in the, uh, presentation that you made here. I'm wondering if you, uh, had the opportunity in the Municipal World, which is a magazine sent out to, uh, all councilors and municipal people, uh, indicating the, uh, animating of the streets, uh, out of Kitchener, Ontario?
Okay, I'll look for it.
And, uh, this, this is without exception, almost a duplication of, uh, of what is being done where they are converting, uh, their downtown and revitalizing it, uh, through arts and culture, uh, and transforming that whole community. Uh, they are doing it in conjunction with the municipality, which has, uh, set aside a fund of a hundred and ten million dollars uh, to, uh, revitalize that over a lengthy period of time. They say five years, but it would probably be longer than that. And, uh, also, uh, they are doing that also by, uh, having festivals and events in the downtown which the municipality participates. So, uh, I would suggest you get a copy of this because this is an exact duplicate of what is happening. And I tell you, the success that they're having there is, is unduplicated. So, uh, it's, it's a tough struggle, a tough fight, but, uh, here's another example with the ones that you've provided that certainly give us the opportunity to see what you can do, uh, to a downtown. And, uh, you've already hit on the, the return on investment, uh, your assessment, your increased tax base, uh, the opportunities for employment and maintaining employment. Um, I just wanted while you were here to make sure you're aware of that and, uh, I, I'm sure I'll have a lot more to say as we go through this discussion. Thank you.
And, Mr. Ritchie, we realize the economic impact and one thing we didn't recognize, uh, and mention this evening was the fact that the assessment base is continuing to grow. And if that assessment base has, had evaporated, what an impact that would have throughout, a ripple impact throughout our city in terms of residential properties and the greater taxes we'd be paying as residential owners.
Yeah.
You might want to address that.
Well, entirely. I mean, we, I, I don't like to paint doomsday scenarios, but I can tell you from my somewhat educated experience in terms of my background that yes, if the downtown did not start to show the signs it's been showing the last couple of years, if it did not have a plan and a commitment that it has now from this room and the stakeholders sitting behind me, amongst others, um, a bad downtown can take down a whole community. There's no question. And, you, you know, you could certainly subject it to your finance people, you know, Mr. Harrison could run some scenarios that talks about if the assessment value of, of this core pops twenty percent or thirty percent, in other words, it gets thirty percent better. What does that do to tax property revenues? And then he could also run some scenarios that talk about the opposite. And, uh, I think this downtown is absolutely in crisis. And I remember this downtown several years ago when I first heard about, um, uh, Mr. Grun's plan and then followed it along from the sidelines. I thought this downtown is under more duress than any other downtown I know of in the whole bloody region. And that's, that's the absolute, that's my opinion. And today, it's the exact opposite. It has, I think it has incredible momentum.
That's well said, Mr. Ritchie. No, you don't have to travel too far, ladies and gentlemen. Uh, I wish our southern neighbors good fortune, but if you just travel across the border and you'll see what happens when a downtown that when I was a young man was very vibrant, and you just see what happens when that deteriorates.
Yeah.
And you go a little further onto Buffalo and you see the, the blight that takes place and it's very sad. And we work with those mayors, my fellow mayors from across the border, and they're just saying, like, what's your secret here? They're very impressed when they come across the border.
Yeah.
Uh, we do exchange ideas, we keep each other apprised and, uh, they're challenged. And they just say that they, they haven't got enough answers. They have issues, social issues, they have economic issues. And, uh, we're very fortunate that, uh, we have avoided that.
And it's a slippery slope. I mean, we, Historic Niagara, the company that I work with, owns seventy-five apartments in the downtown. And we have a mandate, very strong mandate from, uh, from the person I report into to renovate those apartments and make them absolutely as wonderful as we can. Now, in a downtown that is struggling or worse, those buildings fall in the hands of people that are simply trying to drive a rent check. And they're simply trying to rent out units to whoever will take them. Well, you can just guess at what ends up happening with those units and the social issues that start getting developed from there. So, I think the responsibility that Historic Niagara and the stakeholders here, and I, um, there's one person in particular, Lester's here, uh, representing Sal Di Pietro. I mean, the, the view that we share for the optimism for this downtown is absolutely consistent. So, I think that we're on a very, very good path.
Thank you very much. Any other questions of Mr. Ritchie? Uh, Councilor Iannone?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I think Mr. Ritchie's right. We're on, I, I think we are really on a slippery slope. I want to say that I think this was a really good presentation. We probably wouldn't be having this if this had come to us when the vote for the arches were here. I still voted against the arches. I'm a firm believer that sidewalks and roads downtown are more important than arches. But I want to say, I want to clear up something because it's, it's been a very interesting week, Mr. Mayor, and I've had, um, phone calls and emails and door-to-door and this is the letter that went out to your BIA. It says, "City Council is have a meeting, is having a meeting this upcoming Monday night, October fourth, starting by seven PM. Carolyn Iannone has demanded yet another presentation from the BIA to justify beautifying our downtown. She feels that the business owners should carry the burden of revitalizing a downtown core that has been neglected for decades. We need your help to let her know that you do invest in the downtown core and the city should have some skin in the game." Slippery slope I'm talking about is I, clearly there's not an ability for us to disagree on how money is supposed to be spent downtown without personal insults being thrown. But I want to say that I don't have a problem saying to the downtown BIA, "You have to make accountable to the residents every single solitary cent we give you." You and I would agree to disagree that you think the arches will bring people downtown. I think a sidewalk that you don't trip over when you're going into a high-end deli would be better off spent downtown. I'm also very clear that the ISF money had to be spent in the downtown core. I just think it should have been spent on something that maybe would affect or help everybody in the surrounding area. But I, I would like to say that I think, Mr. Mayor, we need to move maybe in a more positive direction. I had quite a conversation today with a number of people, including people who are here. And I want to say maybe we need something rather than a downtown steering committee. Council tonight passed, um, the municipal performance review that we have in front of us. I think we need to look at something like a downtown performance review. Even, not even specifically downtown, but a BIA performance measurement review so that we know that the public money and the CIP money that we've invested is public money. ISF money is public money too, it's all paid for by the same taxpayer. But maybe seeing what the bang for the buck is. I don't think there's any harm in telling the residents that. I get concerned, Mr. Ritchie, when I ask some of your BIA members who've actually had the courtesy to call me and say, "Can you tell me what your problem is with us?" To say, "Look, I want to know if the money we're giving you for downtown festivals is bringing people into your store." And not, not just to look around, but into your store and spend cash. Did your revenue increase through the festival area? It has to increase through the festival area or you don't have a viable business. So if we're investing that money down there, are your business owners seeing a revenue increase through that? I don't think as somebody voting to or not to put public money down there, that that's a bad question. Quite frankly, I think it's a responsible question for council to, to answer to the residents. But we need a mechanism to do that. And I think asking that of all BIAs, Mr. Mayor, that get public money very much like we ask, um, the Boys and Girls Club, who we give public money to, Project Share that we give public money to, all we want to know is, is our bang for the buck.
Yep.
What we're getting. And I, and I also have one more concern. We are, you are, enticing business downtown. And I don't have a problem with that. I mean, if you're gonna sink your whole life savings into the downtown, you want to make sure it works. What I don't understand is, last week, um, one of your BIA who, members who is not happy with the way things are going. So everybody in there, it's not copacetic. And, and wanted to let me know that there is now a proposal or there has been a grant awarded to you. Or, I, I'm not quite sure, so maybe you can explain to the residents who are watching. There's a grant that's been allocated now to build geared-to-income housing downtown. That's, that terrifies me. I think if you're putting high-end delis down there, if you have business owners who are sinking their whole life into the downtown, it's contrary to our plans that are before us to mix low, I won't even say low income, geared-to-income. I want to know how you say to a business, "Spend your life savings, come downtown, and we're going to have geared-to-income people come, live down there in businesses who, these people don't have disposable income." Like, I, I, in my mind, I'm not equating how geared-to-income equates to spending money to make sure that the businesses have the revenue they need to be down there.
Okay. I can certainly address both of those if you
And, Mr. Ritchie, I appreciate the concern that, um, Councilor has, but I don't think she's, uh, informed about the regional call and the review that we've had with the provincial government, uh, for affordable housing. And we do have affordable housing there now, but you're, you're providing for that in additional, so
Yeah, happy to address both comments, um, Councilor Iannone. First of all, in, in the question of transparency, accountability, and ensuring that we're putting our resources, precious resources in the right places, I, I can state absolutely without, without any doubt that all of us want the same thing. So if there are mechanisms that come forward as we go through this process of learning and, uh, and developing a vibrant downtown, if there's a mechanism that we can put in place that has a check and balance because quite frankly, the information's critical to us as primary stakeholders at Historic Niagara and our BIA members who have invested, as you said, their life savings and into their business. They want to know what initiatives they should be supporting in the future, backed up by numbers. And if the city's willing to make some resource available to help the BIA and, and other stakeholders to make this happen, I think that's a good news story. Your, your comment about, um, geared-to-income housing is, and, and that's the problem with the grapevine, is sometimes, you know, some grapes fall off. Basically, the issue, it's misinformation. I can explain. Uh, the proposal, it's a very exciting proposal.
Sure is.
And, uh, a great ad for the downtown. As Mayor Selsi just alluded, Niagara Regional Housing did a call last year looking for proposals from the private sector and, and not-for-profits as well uh, to help provide affordable housing through a range of demographics in the Niagara region. It was a structured tender call. Forty-five responses were submitted. I think six or seven were funded. And when the Niagara Regional Housing Board makes a decision as to what programs they're gonna fund, they look at a number of things. One of them is the demographic that you're looking to serve, the synergies that their investment is going to realize. Again, the greater good, not just providing a house or an accommodation scenario, but also how does that play into the greater good for the community? The ability, the ability of a proponent to deliver on budget, on time, all that sort of stuff. And what it does in terms of preserving the culture and the interesting elements of a community. Those are important elements. And, um, luckily, we were selected as a project proponent to go ahead and move forward. And the building that we're now working with is called the Chong, known as the Chong Building, forty-five, forty-four twelve, uh, forty-four ten, Queen Street. The building has been empty, I understand, for a number of years. I've heard seventeen. I don't know the exact number. Certainly, my engineer called it four brick walls with compost in the middle. It has a lot of issues that need to be resolved. It's been neglected, certainly. It was not adding any value to the street whatsoever. When we're finished with that building, it's gonna provide probably about thirty apartments to a seniors' demographic, fifty-five and over. And it's not geared to income in that sense at all. The only requirement is that you need to be a senior and earning less than thirty-four thousand dollars per year. Well, when she was alive, that was my grandmother and my grandfather on both sides, right? There are lots of people in Niagara that don't make thirty-four thousand dollars a year. There's lots of seniors that don't come anywhere near thirty-four thousand dollars per year. These people buy sandwiches, these people get their hair done, these people are absolutely pleasant to bump into on the street. And I think any community that puts a label on that kind of story is making a serious, serious mistake. So, the units that we're gonna develop are gonna be state-of-the-art in terms of their energy efficiency and the green initiatives we're gonna drive through the building. That's something that I'm quite passionate about. They're going to be put in on the second and third floor predominantly, perhaps some first floor at the back. We'll see where that goes. Uh, the commercial space still wide open to pursue retail interests and add to that great story. So, um, as that project comes online, I see it only adding to the vibrancy of the downtown. It's gonna be a wonderful building, again, looking for seniors who enjoy a walkable community with all the infrastructure here. They can walk the library, they can ride the bus, uh, they can participate in the shops. And I think they do bring an economic, uh, component to the downtown. Listen, we have to get there in stages. We're gonna have a hard time landing a premier condo developer to build, you know, five hundred thousand square foot condos at the end of the street. Neighborhoods don't gentrify that way. They, they gentrify over time as we go in stages and we, and we build it in blocks. That organic approach is what we've been chasing here on Queen Street now for some time. I think it's working and I think this will be another ad, and I hope that more ads are coming forward, so. Thanks for the question. I hope that clarifies.
Good, thank you. Councilor Iannone?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thanks, Mr. Ritchie. That, first of all, it was, I, it was staff that gave me that information, just so that we're clear. So I didn't circumvent anything. But, and, and I also sit on the steering committee that built Bethlehem Place. I'm very aware of what geared-to-income is, thank you, and the need for it. My concern was when I pull up our reports on what council's working on. And one of the last ones that we passed was an eighty thousand dollar study we paid for by Joseph Urban Consultants. I think your BIA, I think every business owner downtown should have a copy of this. I, 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 I think any tool that's put in the hands of your BIAs so that your shop owners make a buck and float their business is good business.
Agreed.
I think as a counselor, we're elected to ask the difficult questions. You don't have to like me. You don't have to agree with my questions. But you have to agree with the fact that we're elected to ask them without worrying about name-calling or any of those things. Because I'm gonna continue to ask questions in regards to public spending.
Yep.
And CIP monies. Um, and I want to make it very clear that CIP monies, I had to explain to somebody today, is actually funded through property tax dollars. So anybody who didn't think that was the case, I wanted them to speak informed. But I think giving documents like this that the city has passed, giving your business owners tools to be more successful can only be a plus. And agreeing to disagree on issues is something that every politician knows is gonna happen. It's, it's, it's the name of the game.
Yeah.
So, I'm not opposed to, to how you're doing it. I'm opposed to where you're spending the money. We just disagree on what would be better in the ground or on top of the ground. But the premise is all the same, and it's to make sure that the business owners lose their shirts. That's my mindset.
Yes, Councilor Thompson?
Yeah, I, I just have to respond to, uh, a couple of comments there, um, about where we're spending the money. The objective is, in fact, the comment was made, uh, you'd rather see somebody have sidewalks that they don't trip over. Uh, if you don't have any people down there, you don't have to worry about tripping over the sidewalk. That's, uh, that's a concern, and I think you did an excellent job, uh, everybody tonight, in, uh, concentrating on the arches. Uh, why does Disney, uh, have, uh, arches and all kinds of spectacular? You create an atmosphere that people enjoy and want to come down to enjoy. And you've had some excellent examples, uh, who have provided that here tonight. Uh, so, um, I get a little nervous when I hear people who are critical of geared-to-income housing also. Uh, I think this whole downtown scenario is a perfect, in fact, the original concept going back twenty years ago about how we should revitalize the downtown, you have to have people there. People that can, maybe are seniors, maybe that, that don't have cars, that can walk into the downtown to go to the delis, to go to the, uh, other, uh, stores that, uh, that they would need to frequent because they don't have the ability to drive around or whatever. So, uh, geared-to-income housing is absolutely essential. The other thing that, that I just want, and I ha- I have to tell you, I, I had a lot of preparation, uh, ready for, uh, this evening. But, uh, I think we're, uh, we're moving ahead in a very positive way and a constructive way, and that's all I'm interested in.
Agreed.
Uh, anybody who suggests, or any stretch of the imagination, that they're not interested in, uh, supporting revitalization, if it costs, and, and certainly the Kitchener thing, is identical. The, the, bring the people down with your festivals, with your arts and culture.
Yeah.
And make it all happen that way. But, uh, uh, just, just to give you an example, and there's been a suggestion about, uh, you're spending the money in the wrong place. You have to spend the money where you're going to, uh, make that difference to make people come down there. It is in sewer and water, and we've done most of that probably, um, fifteen, twenty years ago uh, when we did the initial revitalization, uh, downtown. But, uh, uh, we're not only interested in, uh, in Queen Street. We're interested in Maine and Ferry with the CIP. We're interested in the, uh, the old Tribeca, uh, lionite property, the Brownfield out there. We have a CIP program there. We want to revitalize that for new industry want to revitalize that for new industry. And here's just some examples of, of the cost. We eventually, in the Main and Ferry area, which I fully support a hundred percent, and I hope we get to the point where we can have a, an indoor market up there in the next year or so, and I support that a hundred percent. There's a new museum going up there in conjunction with the provincial and federal government. So, this is from the staff, from Mr. Harrison. Eighteen million dollars will be spent in the, in the Main and Ferry area. And the downtown area, it looks like we have fifty-seven, or five million, seven hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars. So, you know, we're, we're not blowing all our money on, on the downtown area and leaving other areas in the community, they're not, they're not being looked after. Commercial assessment is thirty million, in excess of that in the downtown area. A annual tax levy of one million, seven hundred and forty-four thousand dollars, not insignificant and worth a little bit of effort to try to support it, to make it grow and prosper, and it isn't going to happen overnight, and you're still not out of the woods yet.
No.
You've got to fight, and you've got to really make this thing happen, and hopefully collectively around the room, the council and the mayor are with you to make this happen. And not only here, there, and industrially. So, congratulations on a, a super spectacular presentation, and this is what we needed, and we have to do more of this.
Thank you.
Appreciate your comments, councillor Thompson. Thank you. I have additional speakers. I have councillor Carrio, councillor Fisher, and councillor Iononi.
Thank you, your worship. Mr. Ritchie, it was a great presentation. For the last four years, I've been part of a council that I think has been very pro-development, and I think it includes the downtown. This council has been supportive of what you've been doing on the downtown for the past four years. And there's certainly nothing wrong with individual councillors having questions about how you spend the money, since some of it is coming from other taxpayers. There's absolutely nothing wrong with that. But I'm not a downtown revitalization expert, so I'll have to take my direction from you and your reports. One thing that I'd like to comment on that's very impressive is, for the last couple of years, your BIAs have been investing between four hundred and fifty and five hundred thousand dollars a year. Way back when, when we started talking about what we were going to contribute to the downtown as a council, the BIA investment was very small.
Correct.
I have to compliment your, your business people and your investors. They are putting their money where their mouth is. And if you take and compare the four hundred and fifty to five hundred thousand dollars that you're investing on a thirty million dollar assessment, it's probably ten times what the businesses are doing in Fallsview, Clifton Hill, and Victoria Center, because their, their assessment is many, many, many times greater than what you're doing downtown. So, in comparison, you're making us look bad in the other areas of town by the investment that your people are making in, in your area, which was something I was...
Used to be sixty thousand.
Yes, it used to be sixty. And it was something that I, I was skeptical on way back when, when, when your own businesses were making small investments and you're asking the taxpayers to make large investments. So, I'm impressed, and many of the residents should be impressed, that you're putting your money where your mouth is.
Thank you.
If you're looking for a way to measure the success, councillor Iononi has a, has a good idea. But I think my way of measuring your success is to walk from one end of Queen Street to the other. And I walk from one end of Queen Street to the other, and I measure your success by what I see that's happening there today. And I walked from one end to the other from when I was a little boy, and I've been walking up and down Queen Street as long as I can remember, as far back as walking up and down Queen Street with my grandmother. And look at it today, and if anyone remembers what it was like ten years ago, twelve years ago, that's the way I'm measuring what you're doing.
Yeah.
So, I'm going to continue to support what you're doing, obviously in a cautious way because we're responsible for other people's money.
Yeah.
So, I may be one of the ones questioning an investment sometime, but I think that this council overall has been very supportive
Yeah.
of what you're doing downtown, and will probably continue to support you as long as it looks like you're having the success that you're having now.
Thank you, councillor Carrio.
Thank you.
Thank you. Geared-to-income. Some people don't understand what that means. I have a daughter, as this council knows, with MS for the last couple of years. She's a very talented young woman, an artistic chef with the MS now, and a walker. She's not able to have a job. She has now deployed all of her money, all of her funding. She is now in the environment of geared-to-income. We will be now shortly looking for an accommodation. She is, she is something that would be a benefit to any, any environment. And there are many people like her, and MS is one of those sicknesses or diseases that are striking so many people, but they are talented. And I know she's a real talented lady, making a lot of money at one time, and now she is here at the bottom of the barrel. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Iononi?
I'd like, Mr. Mayor, to put toward, put forward a motion that council enact a BIA performance measure, not downtown BIA, but a BIA performance measure, and send it back to staff, and perhaps they can bring us back something, working with Mr. Ritchie and their BIA, that shows the performance of how many people, do you do a number count through your, through your festivals? What is the revenue count in the businesses? Is a festival a music festival where you don't make a certain amount of revenue that you'd hope to make in that festival, something you want to invest in next time, or do you want to tweak it and maybe do, go into something else? Somewhat like in, in New York City, they have the Casta Pinata Week, you know what I'm trying? And it's, it's from one end of the street to the other. And I was just there in May, and I talked to the business owners, and they said, when it started, it didn't work, but they did, they did revenue count, they did people count, they did advertising count, and they also said, you know, the businesses paid for this to happen. So, maybe we need a measure that will tell your BIA members collectively what each other, not particularly what each other makes, but was this successful for me? And it'll tell the city, Mr. Mayor, but something...
Well, councillor, I appreciate your intent, but we have the chair of the Springlicious event, and we do that each and every year. There's a debriefing, a full financial report. He works with staff. They actually measure the numbers of people on the street. They measure the impact in terms of dollars, certainly, and they report to the board, and that information is available to all the BIA members. So, I don't know if you, if you're looking in isolation, that's only one, one event.
Mr. Mayor, I'm not looking in isolation. I'm looking to see whether the CIP money, which we took contrary to staff's recommendation to put into festivals and events, had a bang for the buck for the city. And I, if you've seen those, I think that's fantastic. I've never seen...
Well, we have them right here. Mr. Ritchie just gave them to us.
No, you have a, you have a document that was handed to us right here. I asked staff today if that report had actually been supplied to them, and they were still waiting for Springlicious's numbers. So, if, if, and I haven't had a chance to read this, because it's handed to us at the beginning of a council meeting, and you have to pay attention to each item. But when I talked to staff at two-thirty today, they don't, they didn't have Springlicious's numbers.
This, this report came this evening, and Springlicious's report has been finalized to the board of directors of the BIA. It was discussed, and those numbers are coming back through to, through staff to, I believe, to be reviewed.
Are you and I talking the same thing? Like, are you contrary to us getting something like this that comes to all of council that shows where...
Not at all.
Okay, that's all I'm looking for.
But, but Mr. Ritchie, and Mr. Ritchie has just supplied us this information. He just showed us what he was talking about in the back of these pages.
They're already doing it.
Exactly. So, we are, and Mr. Ritchie, would you like to elaborate on that, please?
I could. I, I think maybe if, if I could take the liberty, I'd bring, I'd bring Tony Williams up to speak.
Yes, she'd be more appropriate.
She could talk to some of the metrics. I mean, conceptually, the idea of being, of, of making sure we're getting bang for the buck, I mean, we, we scratch our heads with it every day, right? I mean, not in an uncertain doubtful way, but we're always looking for better ways to improve our precious resources. So, Tony, you want to talk to some of the things we do as a professional BIA?
And Tony reports on a regular basis, and Tony, you might want to elaborate the discussions you have with the BIA.
Yeah. Actually, we did counts. We hired Brock University students, and those counts were done mid-morning, one o'clock, two PM, three PM, six PM, and ten PM, all the way through the event that you're talking about, Queen Street Live, because it's very important for us to know as well whether or not we're utilizing the money properly, whether or not we launch a brand-new event, which Queen Street was, Queen Street Live was, is how impactful it is for the businesses. It's not that we wouldn't tweak this event, because most definitely you do. Every time you launch something, you have to add, you have to delete, you have to customize, and we probably would go forward a little differently next time. However, this event was so desperately needed. We had had construction a good for half of the year, and the tenants were literally suffering, suffering greatly. And this, this event managed to increase the traffic fifty-seven percent, and we needed a miracle. We needed to pull something quick out of the air. We needed instant traffic, or they literally were not going to be able to survive the remainder of the year, and I think they can attest to that. So, we have done the counts. I'm happy to report demographics, counts. I think all BIAs should be responsible. I'm happy to give you reports anytime you want. I track Google Analytics to see how our AS are doing on return of investment. We have a fan page where I can also get more demographic data. So, data is totally up my alley. I guess it's just a matter of, I'm concerned is, is it just this BIA being asked for this information, or are all BIAs going to be asked for this information?
And you know, I could just elaborate. I don't want this to be a debate, but councillor, this, this event, that their events are having downtown are quite unique now, because we're not experiencing the same events throughout the city with other BIAs. The BIA in Fallsview might have something that would, maybe next year be a grand event that might happen or not happen on a regular basis. I mean, Ferry may have an event, and others may, may have certain events. Lundy's Lane may have certain events, as you know that they do the candy cane race and part of the Winter Festival Lights and those types of events they have. So, maybe, would you like to elaborate on that, councillor, just to give us some background, please?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I did say any BIA that's receiving public money. And, and like Janice just said, that there's no budget for the Lundy's Lane BIA, Main and Ferry BIA for things like that.
That's right. They, they, that's right. So, how would you measure that? That's my point.
I would say to you, when you start veering your CIP dollars from what they're meant for, to fund things outside of the CIP window, and that's what we did when we funded the festivals and events, because it was the staff report that told us that, and they can get you the staff report again. I read it all again this weekend. All I want to do know is, if we're veering and we're taking it out of things, what the, the CIP was deemed for, are we getting a good bang for a buck? Because I would hate to see that you have businesses that come town that need facade and, and grant infrastructure improvement money that's not there because we spent it on something that doesn't work. That doesn't help anybody looking to relocate a business downtown.
And perhaps councillor, it was a one-off situation, but I mean, you got to ask our CEO to make comment with respect to that. Mr. Todd?
Mr. Mayor, just in terms of what I think the request is being made, I think we'd be happy to sit down with Mr. Ritchie and Mrs. Williams and, and see if there's some kind of reporting mechanism. They've got all the data there. I think they can confirm everything that's happening. I think it would just be a matter of our staff sitting down with them and seeing if we couldn't come up with some form of report that would deliver what the councillor is wanting, and plus give information to all the BIA members that these events are working downtown.
Yeah. And my point is, Mr., Mr. Todd, we do have Mr. Bolowick, staff member, reporting, actually assisting, working with the BIA, sitting on staff now. That information could certainly be easily circulated. You may want to make comment about that.
Well, and we do have, we have had a number of staff working on this through the downtown steering committee and, and our, our planning staff. So, certainly, if, if that's what the motion is, and that's what is being required, I think that our staff could sit down with, with the BIA representatives and, and give a report that would help clarify or provide that information to council.
Councillor Iononi, I think that's fair. You can ask a question, and I think you're asking questions. It's your right to do so, and I think the point being that if you ask a report on the activity and the impact, I don't think that hurts. If you, you set a, a committee in place to examine all BIAs, they have different things happening at different times. I'm not sure if it's that applicable, but if you'd like to make your motion accordingly, please go ahead. Yes, if you'd like to clear?
I mean, to make it simple, you haven't given any money to any other BIA. I mean, a BIA is funded through their own tax levy. What you're talking about is monies that have been taken from the CIP, and by all means, there should be accountability. And I think a report on, for example, the money that was granted at the beginning of the summer for two-hundred-and-fifty thousand, I'm sure that the BIA would be happy to report back on the success of that money that was given to them.
You wish to make that motion?
I do. So, Ms. Williams, it's just your BIA. We haven't given it to anybody else. But that, and I don't, and I think when you make that presentation here and a report comes back to council here, then the residents get to hear where their money was spent too. And I don't think there's anything wrong with that.
That's fair. That's a fair question. Excuse me. Seconded by councillor Wing, do you wish to make a comment? Are you seconding the motion, first of all?
Yes, I did second the motion.
Good, okay.
Yeah, I did indicate to councillor Iononi that there is no budget from the Main and Ferry BIA for Culture Fest. It's not a BIA event. It has nothing to do with the BIA. It's a, a really grassroots festival started last year by Reverend Wally Hong of the Drummond Hill Presbyterian Church, and it is community groups, not including the BIA, coming together to, to do that. There are, I guess, sort of two festivals on Lundy's Lane. The Kids' Day that's been held in the spring, was held the spring of this year, end of last year, when the Canada One, part of the Canada One parking lot is filled with inflatables and children from the community come and enjoy themselves for an afternoon, that's paid for totally by the BIA. And Candy Cane Lane is also paid for by the BIA. I guess, you know, as the Main and Ferry BIA representative, I'm not really sure why councillor Thompson was drawing comparisons between the two, maybe because they're both CIP areas. But, you know, what he didn't note was that the spending he referred to in the Main and Ferry area was separating sewers, which we do all over the city, not just there, replacing a water main from the eighteen hundreds. You know, I think, I think it was time, and maintaining and enhancing a municipal facility. The museum is a municipal building, and you know, if he was doing a fair comparison, he'd look at how much money was put into this building in the last few years as, as well. But, you know, you know, this wasn't really a comparison of apples to apples. What wasn't noted was that there has been no property tax money spent in the Main and Ferry or any other BIA area on their festivals, or at least not Main and Ferry. There hasn't been money spent on their festivals, and I know in Lundy's Lane there hasn't been either. And there hasn't been money on things like decorating Christmas trees, like there was here. It was over a thousand dollars, I think it was last year. And all the other public money that has come into this area hasn't gone into Main and Ferry, hasn't gone into Lundy's Lane. And I've pointed out before how badly some of those businesses in one part of the lane are struggling. Like, there have been several bankruptcies this year. So, it's not just this area of the city that we happen to be in geographically right now, but other areas of the city are hurting as well. And, you know, I think the thing is, nobody's opposed to arches. The taxpayers just don't want to pay for them, and nor should they. It's the BIA's responsibility. Every other BIA pays for their beautification and streetscaping themselves. The Main and Ferry BIA is paying for the streetscaping that will be in place by this time next year itself. It's paying for the street trees. It's paying for this new street lights. You know, it's just not the taxpayers' responsibility. It's the businesses' responsibility to beautify and enhance like that. And most importantly...
Excuse me, order, please.
Most importantly, there's a gentleman I spoke with today, and I know he's watching tonight, so I think he'll appreciate me bringing this forward. This could set a really costly precedent. If we, in one BIA area, use taxpayers' money to fund something that the BIA should be doing, that's one of the things BIAs are set up to do, then why could not other BIAs throughout the city come and ask us to do the same thing for them? If you do it here, why would you not do it on Lundy's Lane, Main and Ferry, Victoria Center, Fallsview, Clifton Hill? What makes one area so special? Why would you do it in one area and then not do it in the others? You know, this is a very, could be a very costly precedent. It's certainly not a fair and equitable situation. Nobody is opposed to the arches, but what councillor, I know you and I are both hearing at the doors, is the taxpayers in the rest of the city don't want to pay for them.
Councillor Thompson? Councillor Thompson?
Yeah. I don't know whether I've been sitting in the same meeting tonight as, as people on the other side. Exactly the reason I brought up about the spending is because of the comments that are being made there. There is a hundred-year sewer that was replaced downtown for how much? Eight, eight hundred thousand dollars?
No addition.
And, and which we had the big debate about whether we were going to fund that or not. It's no different than what the, the spending was or is going to be up in the Main and Ferry area. So, you know... So, you know, the whole idea here is, you believe in the revitalization of an area, you, or you don't. And in my opinion, we got a huge investment down here. There are other private sector people that have made huge investments. It's pretty insignificant when you talk about supporting a, a business district that brings in a million and a half dollars in tax revenue, and creates that many jobs. I have, I have no hesitation in, in supporting what is going on downtown. And I tell you, if we ever pull the plug, you're going to see a big change, and all that is going to be gone. So, I have no hesitation in what I'm doing.
Counselor Peter Angelo.
Thanks, Your Worship. I guess I just want to say, first of all, that I, I don't know that I fully believe in the report, because I don't think that there's any benchmarks that are set there. I mean, I'm not quite sure what we're comparing. We're comparing money spent to what increased tax dollars that the city takes in? Or are we comparing it to increased employment levels? Are we comparing it to community benefit? And if we are, I mean, how do you measure community benefit? So, I, I don't really know that the benchmarks are there for me to support the report. And in, in terms of pitting sort of the downtown against the Main and Ferry area, I, I don't think any of us really should go there. I don't think it's a good idea. I mean, I think both BIAs are trying to attract people down to their area. The downtown is choosing to attract people using festivals, and so we're investing in the festivals. The Main and Ferry BIA has asked that, you know, we get a new museum, and also that we invest in, in Sylvia Place. And we've done that for them, Your Worship. So, I think in both areas, we're trying to attract new people, or trying to attract people there. And we've made major investments in both areas. So, I don't think it's fair to pit one against the other.
Thank you. Counselor Ring?
Just a correction. No, it was the Board of Museums, not the Main and Ferry BIA, which brought forward the request.
Yes, we're using, that's right. We're using...
Yeah, that was not the BIA's request.
That's correct, yes.
BIA knows that the centerpiece of the CIP is the market. It just didn't want to compete with the museum, so it stepped back.
Fair.
Counselor... I mean, then just for correction purposes, I mean, if the, if the marketplace is the center, we've also taken CIP funds and set them aside for Main and Ferry, for Sylvia Place. But I understand, but we've still set the money aside. So, we've made investments in both attractors, is what I'm trying to say.
That's correct. Thank you. Counselor Diodati?
Yes, Your Worship, I was just going to reiterate what Counselor Peter Angelo said, and I believe that pitting one area against the other is counterproductive, and I don't think it's in the best interests of any of the areas, because we're all part of the same community. And what's good for one area is going to benefit the, the other area as well. And we'll support any good ideas, wherever they come. If Lundie's Lane has some good ideas, Main and Ferry, and prime example that Counselor Peter Angelo mentioned is the farmer's market. We've put aside some significant millions of dollars that we are planning to do to support the Main and Ferry area. And I believe a farmer's market is probably exactly what that area needs to revitalize. And as well was mentioned earlier, that the CIP funding, and it does address and mention festivals in the CIP, Your Worship, and it's certainly within the mandate of a CIP. I think that what we do for one area, we do for all the areas, and whether we're going to support all the areas, and if we're going to ask for reports, then we get reports from all the areas. I don't think we center one out. I think, Your Worship, the best thing to do is work with the groups that are willing, and it's obvious they put their money where their mouth is. They're on a, we can see the route they're on, Your Worship. They're on a positive path, and it's wonderful to see what this looks like from when most of us got here on this council. The downtown, I'm, I'm becoming proud. I send people downtown. People call me. And my brother-in-law in town this summer, and, from Oakville, and he said, wow, he goes, I haven't been down, downtown in years. He goes, I couldn't believe how much fun it was. And, and when I hear things like that, it's just so exciting. And, and one of the big things I want to see is around that go train, Your Worship, because the go train is going to act as an umbilical cord to the GTA. And it's important that when they get off that train, or when they get off those buses, they're not looking at these eyesores that they're looking at today. And I can see what's happening. We've got some momentum, and it's important that we keep that momentum carrying through, Your Worship. And I, I'm proud of tonight. I'm proud of this presentation. And yeah, it would have been nice to have it sooner, but, but it just, I think it reiterates the fact that we're on the right track. And I'm very proud of the fact that the downtown is, they're, they're doing, they're not just asking for help, they're doing it and asking us to assist them while they're doing it, Your Worship. So, I'm very happy with what I've heard tonight.
Thank you.
Yeah, just about the market. It's a rather tired facility. It's over 30 years old. It really is, has reached the end pretty much of its useful lifespan, and, you know, like, the arena needs replacing. Can staff, whoever on staff, through you two, whoever on staff can tell me this, how many millions have been put aside for, for that project?
Yeah, we haven't put the money aside. We actually have, we're...
Oh, but Counselor Peter Angelo said we have.
Now, Mr. Harrison, would you like to...
What I did say is that we took money out of our CIP funding, and that we set it aside for the acquisition or for the revitalization of Sylvia Place.
We do have property funds for acquisition. We have a property account that we can acquire. Mr. Harrison, would you like to elaborate, please, or just...
In the CIP account of Mr. Mayor, we have dedicated certain amounts for land acquisition. And in the CIP of the Main and Ferry area, if you recall, the Main and Ferry BIA to, in, to support Counselor Wing's assertion, have dedicated a portion of that money, a large portion of that money, in the hundreds of thousands of dollars, to land acquisition. The capital project in its totality is in the millions of dollars, and, and as we have began to put our capital asset, longer-term, five-year plan together, that is identified as a reinvestment project. But at the moment, we haven't funded that, other than the money that's been set aside for land acquisition.
Good. I think we've debated this long enough, members of council, but thank you for your comments, and I think they've been very positive. Mr. Ritchie and Ms. Williams, thank you so much for your presentation. I'm going to call the vote if we can. Counselor Thompson?
I believe there was another speaker. Did you have one?
I don't, I don't think there is that I know of.
Yeah.
Pardon? Yeah. Really, I think the clerk is just, just advising us, this isn't going to be a debate, Counselor, but do you have a motion you'd like to make?
Well, I had a call earlier, if they came, could he make a comment?
We do have a spokesman for the BIA that has made a presentation.
Yes, Mr. St. Croix. I would move that he give the opportunity to speak.
Mr. St. Croix, do you wish to speak?
Sure.
Okay. The motion on the floor, allow Mr. St. Croix to speak. All in favor? Please raise your hands. Okay, the motion is carried. Please come forward, Mr. St. Croix. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Appreciate your time. You know, I, I've been a resident of the city for about 10 years. I grew up in St. Catharines. I spoke here once before. And I just wanted to say thank you to everybody at this, this table. You've got to put a lot of time and effort. I was here four years ago, when it wasn't so civil, if I can say so. And everybody's done a good job moving in the right direction, okay? Moving in a positive direction. This city needs positiveness. We need to grow. We need to do the right things for downtown and Main and Ferry, okay? But you've got to do something right first. You can't build everything all at once. And I'm only, I don't know if I can say that to anybody. I'm not going to, okay? But you need to understand that we all need to work together. This city can thrive. 20 million people come to the city and have to look at what Mr. Diodati said when they come off a bus or a train, okay? This isn't rocket science. This is a business. You have to operate it as a business. When Mr. Carroll runs his business, he has to operate it as a business. We need to understand, you have to have a business mind. This isn't rocket science. This is simple economics, okay? I'm in finance. I understand. I'm a business person. I understand, okay? Let's put our best foot forward. Let's all work together, okay? It's not perfect. Never will it be. Do the right thing. Build it what? Build it good. It's going to work. Put your, put, everybody, put their best foot forward. Ask your questions. I, I echo your questions. I want to hear answers too. We all do. We're all citizens of Niagara Falls. We all got skin in the game. But be positive. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. St. Croix. Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, we'll move on if we can. We do have unresolved business. Mr. Clerk, the unresolved issue with regard to downtown steering committee, would you like to elaborate, please?
Well, first, before I do that, I know you do have a motion on the floor regarding getting a report back on the, I mean, okay, this is what I construed the motion, to be a report back on the results of the funds from the CIP reserve granted earlier this year.
Okay, we have that motion to deal with. Any further comments? Having, Counselor Peter Angelo?
Can you just repeat that one more time?
Yep.
Because I thought the motion was bang for the buck.
I don't know where to go with that one. That staff, in conjunction with the downtown BIA, report back on the results of the funds from the CIP reserve granted earlier this year.
That's just the report.
Okay. All ready for the motion? Vote. All those in favor, please raise your hands. One, two, three, four. Motion is carried. Eight. Thank you. Now, Mr. Clerk, the issue with regard to the unresolved matter in the steering committee and the downtown issue.
Yes, Your Worship, if you recall at the last meeting, there was a motion on the floor from Counselor Diodati, second, or sorry, Counselor Inoni, seconded by Counselor Wing to, or maybe the other way around, to disband the downtown steering committee. So, that's still out there. If, if the mover and the seconder want to go ahead with that motion, they should advise council.
Okay. Compared with that, it's sand?
Yes.
Okay, any debate on that motion? If not, we'll call, we'll call the vote?
You know, I, I, I would like to give that some more thought, and have some more input from, from the BIA. They wanted to make some changes. I'd like to, to hear staff with the pros and cons. And I think it's a good, a good way to start the new session of council, and let them deal with it.
Well, then, I better have a motion to defer than counsel.
Well, that's what I'm, yeah, I'll motion to defer.
You want to qualify that, please?
I'll make a motion.
Defer to...
To, to the new council deals with it.
Second.
Okay. Okay, we have a motion deferred to the new council. And any further comments by members of council?
Can't.
Oh, yeah, that's right, you can't. Sorry, you're right. Okay. All those in favor, deferral, please raise your hands. Motion is carried. One opposed? Okay, thank you. Thank you. Move on then. Mr. Clerk, can I clarify that?
Yep. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen. Clerk? Clerk? Okay, Mr. Clerk, will you introduce the next item on the agenda, please? Thank you.
Your Worship, a public meeting is now being convened to consider a proposed plan of vacant land condominium at, I'm not sure where it's at.
Mr. Hurlovich, could you help out, please?
Yeah. Your Worship, it's in...
I think it's in the Fernwood Estates, yeah.
Yes. Right. I know that the...
Fernwood Phase Two draft plan.
That's right. Great, thank you.
So, there's no municipal address yet.
Great.
Notice was given by first-class mail in accordance with the Planning Act on Friday, August 27, 2010, and by posting a sign on the property in question. Anyone who wants notice of council's decision shall leave their name on the sign and sheets outside the council chamber.
This time, we've asked the director of planning to explain the purpose of the application. Mr. Hurlovich, would you be kind of pleased to elaborate?
Okay. Then the clerk's going to bring the presentation up on the board. The, the application is for a public meeting under the Planning Act to consider a vacant land plan of condominium. The application is on, in the Fernwood Two Plan of Subdivision, and the land extends between Hendershot Drive and Eagle Ridge. Property is shown in blue. It's Block 120. In the Fernwood Plan of Subdivision, there's a small access to Hendershot, and there's a large frontage along what's called Eagle Ridge Drive. The property itself has an area of 1.67 hectares, and is proposed to be divided into 40 lots for townhouse units. There are two units in the middle of the development. There's kind of an island of, in the, in the midst of that, which are actually two units, which are considered as semi-detached building by virtue of our bylaw, so that would have to be recognized to a minor variance at a later date. The Plan of Subdivision is, as I mentioned, 1.67 hectares, 40 units proposed. The, it's a plan of condominium, so there would be individual ownership over the land and driveway, and then there would be other areas that are joint, or owned in common. It is Block 120 in a plan of subdivision, so already it's gone through much of the subdivision process, which requires that we look at roads, stormwater channelization, and noise attenuation walls. All of those matters are in place. The, the final layout of the development will necessitate a possible minor variance. I mentioned the semi-detached units, as well as, so there's the semi-detached. And then the two lots closest to Eagle Ridge Drive don't have the setback that the bylaw would require, so there will be minor variance as required. Those are conditions of draft plan approval. The staff is there for holding this public meeting to get any comments that the public may wish to be, to make. Beyond that, the staff is recommending the draft plan of condominium be approved, that the mayor or as designated be authorized to sign the draft plan of approval, and the draft plan would lapse after three years if it's not registered, or unless an extension is not obtained, and that the mayor and city clerk be authorized to execute the condominium agreement. Those are the highlights.
Thank you very much, Mr. Hurlovich. And are there any questions for members of council of the planner? Having seen none, then, members of the public are advised that failure to make an oral written submission at this public meeting could result in the Ontario Municipal Board dismissing, dismissing any referral it receives if the party has not made an oral written submission at this public meeting. At this time, council will hear from anyone other than the applicant who wishes to speak to the draft plan of vacant land condominium. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak to this matter? Once again, is there anyone here who wishes to speak to the draft plan of the vacant land condominium? For the third time? Okay, at this time, then, council will hear from the applicant or his representative. His representative here of the applicant?
No one's here.
No one's here? Okay. Okay. At this time, then, if there are any further questions by anybody present in terms of members of council, nothing further. I'm going to close the public meeting with respect to the draft plan of vacant land condominium. Moved by Counselor Thompson, seconded by Counselor Einoni. Any further questions or comments? Having seen none, all of the favor. Motion is carried. Thank you very much. We'll move on to the next item. Mr. Clerk?
A public meeting is now being convened to consider a proposed amendment to the city's zoning bylaw to preserve, preservation of a heritage house at 6590 and 6592 Dunn Street. Notice was given by first-class mail in accordance with the Planning Act on Friday, August 27th, 2010, and by posting a sign on the property in question. Anyone who wants notice of the passage of the zoning bylaw amendment to participate in any site plan process if applicable, or preserve their opportunity to appeal to the Ontario Municipal Board, shall leave their name on the sign-in sheets outside the council chamber.
Thank you very much. And once again, I'm going to ask the director of planning to explain the purpose and the reason for the proposed bylaw amendment. Mr. Hurlovich?
Thank you, Worship. This zoning amendment affects two parcels of land. One is numbered as 6590 Dunn Street, the other is 6592. The applicant, our application is initiated by the city, and it is in place, as the clerk has said, to recognize the existing dwelling and then to preserve the landscape setting of the property for heritage purposes. This there photo shows basically the, um, building that's in question and the surrounding land uses. The, the building, while it's labeled, or has its municipal address as Dunn Street, actually has its only frontage at this moment at, on Leewood Court. And so its backyard is actually its front yard onto Leewood, and that's labeled as parcel number one. Parcel number two is the land that's owned by the, the city. The surrounding land uses are largely detached, single detached dwellings, as well as some semi-detached dwellings. The city-owned lands are the lands on the slide now. Part one are the lands that would be, that have been declared surplus. Well, in fact, parts one to four have been declared surplus by the city. Part one would be the lands that would be, um, part of this application. Parts three, two, and four are being conveyed to the budding landowners of the semi-detached dwellings because their driveways encroach into those areas. The, um, city initiated the zone change for Parcels One and Two to a site-specific R2 zone. The parcel one has an area of 1,054 square meters. It contains the Spence Weaver House. This is a designated heritage property under the Heritage Act. As I mentioned, its address is 6590 Dunn Street, although its parcel actually fronts onto Leewood Court. Parcel Two is the land that's owned by the city, 499 square meters. Parcel Two was created, as was the parcel the house is sitting on at the time that the lands were subdivided. That is the, the Weaver Estate. The, at the time that the subdivision was created, there was an agreement between the city and the owner of the Spence Weaver House that allowed, the city retained ownership of Parcel Two, but it allowed the owner to maintain that property as if it was its front yard and provided full visibility and, and, um, to Dunn Street for historical reasons. Last year, council decided that they would sell the majority of Parcel Two. In fact, it had, had, has really only value to the, the Spence Weaver House, because, as I say, it is the front yard of that property. So in return for preserving the historic view of the house into perpetuity, was necessary to go through the zoning. This is the first step in the process. We did have a public open house in August with the neighborhood, and there were no objections at that time. The application is supported by the provincial and regional policy plans. Our own official plan as well supports the preservation of cultural heritage. The owners of the Spence Weaver House have maintained Parcel Two over the last 35 years, and this amendment will facilitate the conservation of that property. The intent, then, is to zone the whole of the property as R2, so that the entirety is required, and we permit only one dwelling unit, so there, that is, there could be no other dwellings built on the property. As well, the lands that are Parcel Two, that are currently owned by this city, are being, mean, excuse me, be maintained as the landscaped yard. The, that landscaped area as well would have a thirty-two, um, sorry, 35-meter front yard setback, and that would preclude any additional buildings from being built into that area. There are a couple of other, um, changes or housekeeping matters that we will make as a part of this zoning change. One is to recognize the front yard depth, as I mentioned, although it's the back of the house, it actually fronts onto Leewood Court. It should have a six-meter front yard setback. In actual fact, it has a three-meter front yard setback, so we'll correct that. As well, the driveway slightly exceeds the municipal standard, which is eight meters, and we'll correct that to its current width of 10 meters. So those are the changes that we're introducing. The two parcels then would be merged into one. The parcel would be, has been declared surplus, and it would be sold to the owners of the Spence Weaver House, that is, Mr. and Mrs. Barkley. There are two additional parcels that would be conveyed. I've already mentioned those. So the bylaw will limit the whole of the lands. Therefore, staff is recommending that the city-initiated zoning bylaw amendment to change the lands to a site-specific R2 zone be approved and recognize the existing location of the dwelling, preserve the front yard as the landscaped area to ensure the visibility of that historic dwelling.
Thank you very much, Mr. Hurlovich. And once again, members of the public are advised that failure to make a written, I'm sorry, an oral or written submission at this public meeting will result in the Ontario Municipal Board dismissing any referral that it receives. Failure to sign the sign-in sheets will result in staff rejecting an appeal as per Section 34, subsection 19 of the Planning Act. At this time, council will hear from anyone other than the applicant who wishes to speak to the proposed bylaw amendment. Is there anyone other than the applicant who wishes to speak to the proposed bylaw amendment? Once again, is there anyone other than the applicant who wishes to speak? For the third time? Anyone wishing to speak to the proposed bylaw amendment? Having seen none, council will now hear from the applicant or his representative?
Or the applicant.
Not here? With the applicant, of course, the city of Niagara Falls, we've spoken to already. That's fine.
Some people say we're not.
Any further, yeah, we're not here. Any further questions from members of council? Having seen none, then, the public meeting with respect to the proposed zoning bylaw amendment is now concludes, concluded. Counselor Thompson, moved by Counselor Thompson, seconded by Counselor Wing. Any further comments or questions? Having seen none, all those in favor, motions carried. Thank you. And, Mr. Clerk, we're talking about the third item in planning. We have a public meeting to deal with a matter of a signed bylaw amendment application. The applicant, again, is the city of Niagara Falls with regard to banners on public property. We have a recommendation report in your minutes, and, oh, sorry, your agenda, I should say. Mr. Clerk, would you wish to address this, please?
Yes, Your Worship, what, what we've brought forward for you is, as a result, earlier this year, you received a request from the Victoria Centre BIA to put banners on the light standards advertising the BIA. You approved it at that time and asked staff to come back with the appropriate amendments to the bylaw to legalize that, in a sense. So that's what's in the report and in the bylaw amendment that's on your agenda. It's an amendment to the signed bylaw that will allow for BIA banners on light poles. It will also allow for banners along Stanley Avenue, basically, which will promote events associated with the Niagara Civic Convention, Civic and Convention Center. We advertised these amendments on our website and had two advertisements in the Niagara Falls Review on September 18th and 21st. We also emailed directly to the BIAs and the NCC, see, because they're the only ones who are directly affected by these amendments.
Good, thank you. Is there anyone present who wishes in the gallery to speak to this bylaw amendment? Anyone present wishing to speak to the bylaw amendment? Okay, having none, then, I'm going to ask for a motion from council to move the recommendation to pass the amending bylaw. Moved by Counselor Peter Angelo, seconded by Counselor Diodati. Any further comments or questions by members of council? Having seen none, all of the favor. Motion is carried. Thank you very much. Move on to the mayor's report. I'd like to begin this evening by extending our condolences to the families of Mr. Russ Stout of our Business Development Office on the passing of his mother, Myrtle, also to Mr. Paul Campagato of our Finance Department on the passing of his mother-in-law on his pursuit, and as a council, we offer our sympathy to the families for their losses. In other events, I'm pleased to report on the decision of the Regional Council to locate the Niagara Regional Police Headquarters in Niagara Falls. I'd like to commend our city staff on their work over the past number of years in preparing for this outcome. Our efforts to bring forward the best locations with the greatest access, the appropriate space and size, in close proximity to other key safety and enforcement partners have been, have made a difference for all of the citizens of our region. And I wanted to thank you, as well, to many of our regional, my regional colleagues for their diligence on this issue. This decision will truly benefit in creating efficiencies in police operations. And in Niagara Falls, of course, we are pleased to host the state-of-the-art facility in our community, which will be built in the future, which will provide an excellent accessibility to our residents as well. And I offer my congratulations to Niagara Regional Police on establishing a first-class facility in our city. Also, I'd like to note, the 420 Highway in Niagara Falls is now officially designated as Niagara Veterans Memorial Highway, thanks to our veterans groups, legionnaires, students and emergency services, who attended to mark this special dedication at a ceremony held on September 23rd and hosted by Counselor Peter Angelo. The highway signs have been posted now by the MTO to remind us of this important honor to our local veterans. Also, I'm pleased to report on the events of the annual mayor's prayer breakfast with you this evening, held last Friday. It was a thrill to welcome nearly 600 guests to breakfast to participate in a morning of prayer and faith. It was an exceptional event, all, well, partly due to the, and part of the Niagara Falls ministerial fellowships, our turn to Prayer Week. I thank those members of council who attended, to acknowledge Counselor Jim Diodati, Counselor Vince Carrio, and Counselor Victor Peter Angelo, among students, members of the business and faith communities. This week, we also are celebrating Fire Prevention Week. I'm going to call on Chief Lee Smith to tell us a bit more about some of the activities that are ongoing this week. Chief Smith?
Thank you, Worship. First of all, I'd like to start off with a couple of alarming statistics. First of all, 85% of the fire deaths that occurred in Ontario occurred in the home. And of those, 65% of them occurred in homes that didn't have properly working smoke alarms. So it's very fitting this year that our fire prevention theme is smoke alarms a sound we can live with. So what we're going to do is really try and maximize our exposure in the community and use our first line of defense, education, to educate our public and let them know how important it is to make sure they have properly working smoke alarms. Yesterday, we had an open house at the fire stations where the public were allowed to come in and visit with our firefighters and ask questions. Today, we had a fire drill at City Hall, which was very successful. And we're also doing school drills today. Tomorrow, we do the Catholic and French elementary school fire drills, and we're at the McBain Center for Fire Safety Education display between 6:00 and 9:00 p.m. Wednesday, we're promoting fire safety on 105.1 The River at 8:40 in the morning, and we're at Fallsview Casino Associate Dining Room from 11:30 to 1:30 with presentations, again, and static display. Our highlight on Wednesday is Family Night at Home Depot Parking Lot from 6:00 to 9:00, where we invite the public in to show them some of the things that the fire department does and some of our fire prevention activities. Thursday, we have fire drills at the public elementary schools, fire drill at the Coronation Center. We're at the Metro Grocery Store for educational sessions between 6:00 and 9:00 p.m. On Saturday, Fire Station Four in Chippewa is having Fire Prevention Day at Chippewa Foodland. We have a children's workshop at Home Depot. And I'd really like to give a special thanks to our media for helping to support Fire Prevention Week, including the shopping news with their Fire Prevention Week edition. We've had review running stories Niagara this week that had a special section, and Kojiko for airing PSAs. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Chief Smith. Just another comment as well, we look forward to joining the Niagara Falls Transit to celebrate 50 years of service to the Niagara community on Friday, October 15th at 3:00 p.m. The location for the anniversary event is at 4320 Bridge Street. Food donations for Project Share will be collected, and we're helping celebrate with free bus rides on October 15th. We invite residents to take a ride on the bus and support the Niagara Falls Transit next Friday. This concludes my remarks. Move on, if I may, to the communications and comments from the clerk. We have seven proclamations, members of council. If it's your pleasure, I'll read them all and have, have you deal with them in a one motion. Is that okay? The first proclamation is, okay, moved by Counselor Thompson, seconded by Counselor Fisher, that we proceed with one. Is that right? All in favor? Thank you. Motion is carried. First of all, we have boost child awareness prevention intervention, request that council proclaim October as Child Abuse and Neglect Prevention Month, and October 1st, 2010, as Go Purple for Prevention Day. Number two, Correctional Service Canada requesting that November 14th and 21st, 2010, be proclaimed as Restorative Justice, Justice Week in the city of Niagara Falls. Proclamation number three, that Canadian Diabetes Association requests that the month of November be proclaimed as Diabetes Awareness Month, and November 14th, 2010, as World Diabetes Day in the city of Niagara Falls. Proclamation number four, Niagara Falls Public Library requests that October 7th to 23rd, 2010, be proclaimed as Public Library Week in the city of Niagara Falls. Proclamation number five, the QP requests that October 27th, 2010, be recognized and proclaimed as Child Care Worker and Early Childhood Educator Appreciation Day in the city of Niagara Falls. Proclamation number six, that Early Years Niagara requests that council proclaim November 20th, 2010, as National Child Day in the city of Niagara Falls. And proclamation number seven, Hospice Week, that requests that the week of October 9th to 15th, 2010, be proclaimed as International Hospice Week in the city of Niagara Falls. Moved by, again, Counselor Maves, seconded by Counselor Carrio. Once again, all those in favor? Motion is carried. Thank you. Mr. Clerk, are there any additional items for council's consideration?
Just one, Your Worship, it's the annual request for the fireworks for the Winter Festival of Lights.
Okay. And we'll so deal with that. Motion to approve? Moved by Counselor Thompson, seconded by Counselor Carrio. All those in favor? Motion is carried. Counselor Einoni?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I'm sorry, I should have handed these bracelets out earlier, and you, you talked about how October is Child Abuse Prevention Month. Well, FACS asked me to read out this, this, um, literature and hand out the bracelets here, and I apologize, I should have done that sooner. And so I'd just like to read out, October is Child Abuse Prevention Month. Did you know that poverty, domestic violence, substance abuse, and mental illness are the largest contributors placing children at risk for abuse and neglect? The recent economic downturn has impacted more and more families, increasing the need for child protection services. That most children will be helped in their homes with their families, that a relatively small number of children will need to come into foster care, and that FACS provides many of the community services such as preschool and childcare programs, drop-in centers, and counseling to support families. Child Abuse Prevention Month events and activities, they want the residents to know that the Purple Ribbon Awareness Campaign, and they're here for everybody on the side table, ribbons, buttons, and materials are made available to areas, schools, municipalities, and community organizations. Kickoff and poster contests with Loretto Catholic Elementary School in Niagara Falls. The theme is What a Kid Needs. Peace Daily Pin Wheels to be presented to FACS by James Bourne School, reciprocal presentation to the Child Abuse Prevention Month materials. I Am Your Children's Aid ad to runs each Friday, to run each Friday through the month of October with the purple ribbon flag in our three daily newspapers. FACS Night with the Ice Dogs is October 16th. Child Abuse Prevention Month materials and messages will be announced throughout and salute to foster parents. Foster Family Week is October 17th to 23rd. Foster Care Information Open House is October 19th at 82 Hanover Drive. Foster Parent Appreciation Dinner is October 20th. Educational Forum with FACS and our school boards focused on enhancing educational outcomes for children in care, October 21st at the Quality Inn Parkway Convention Center in St. Catherine's with Dr. Bruce Ferguson, PhD in psychiatry, with the Hospital for Sick Children and University of Toronto as the keynote speaker. And under media articles exploring the subject of children abuse in our community and what measures are being taken to assist families and children in need to prevent child abuse and neglect. And anybody interested, they're asking to please attend and to wear your ribbon. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for comments. All ready, and we'll move on to reports. We have a CEO's report, HR 2010-10, Council Salary Increases. Counselor Carrio?
Thank you, Your Worship. After reading the port, I find, the report, I find it a bit incomplete. I think that council had asked for more information. I think we had asked for comparable salaries for other municipalities. We had asked for also what exactly a counselor could access as far as everything that they could access, mileage, other things that council could get during their, for remuneration or reimbursement of expenses. It's not in here, Your Worship. I think it's important, and considering that it was so well pointed out by our reporter that whatever this council does can be changed by the next council coming in, I think that maybe we should put this off to the new council with the additional information in there. I think that this, this report leads you to think that the council was prepared to just vote themselves an increase. I don't think that was the idea at all. I think it was to have a look at it before the closing nominations, so that this council maybe could make a recommendation. Whether it stood or not, I don't know, but I think it would be difficult for a new council coming in to just increase their salary. So I think they might have taken our advice, since we would have been here for four years, knowing exactly what's asked of us, what our duties are. But seeing that most of the things aren't in here that we asked for, I'm going to ask for this to be deferred until the next new council comes in and deal with it then.
Thank you, Counselor. Seconded by Counselor Maves. Thank you. Subject is no debate, and we'll call the question. All those in favor? Please raise your hands. It's unanimous. Thank you very much. Move on to ratification of Community Services Committee. I'm going to call the chair, Counselor Einoni.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The following items are to be ratified come tonight's meeting of the Community Services Committee. The Corporate Services Minutes of September 20th meeting be approved. Under Reports, MW 21057, LED Street Lighting Pilot Study, that staff be authorized to commence a pilot study of new technology, street lighting at various locations throughout the city, and further that the proposals submitted by the Devon Group and GAMs be approved at an upset limit of $37,000 plus $3,000 contingency, and further that the funding for this project be allocated from the Street Lighting Services $30,000 and Engineering Services $10,000 accounts in the approved 2010 current budget, and that the council tour the test locations. Under TS 201033, Intersection Control Review, that the traffic signal at Queen Street and St. Clair Avenue be removed and replaced with an always stop, that the traffic signal at Queen Street and St. Lawrence Avenue be removed and replaced with an always stop, and that an always stop be installed at the intersection of Queen Street and Ontario Avenue. Under TS 201047, Intersection Control at ATAP Court at Cheesman Street, that a stop sign replace the existing yield sign facing southbound motorists on Cheesman Street at ATAP Court. Under PD 201087, Location of Drug Treatment Clinics, that council send the resolution in the council agenda petitioning the province to require all methadone clinics to go through a mandatory community engagement process as recommended by the Methadone Maintenance Treatment Practices Task Force 2007, and that the province investigate- Treatment Practices Task Force 2007, and that the province investigate location restrictions for clinics that exclusively deal with chemical dependencies. Under F 201055, 2009 Consolidated Financial Statements for the information of the Corporate Services Committee, under F 201056, Municipal Performance Measures, that this report be received for the information of city council, and that the staff post the information on the city's website. Under New Business, that staff be directed to pick up refuse from illegal dumping, and I still move.
Moved by Counselor Inoney, seconded by Counselor Carrio. Any comments? Counselor Peter Ansel.
Yeah, Your Worship, just on the resolution, was it supposed to be for clinics that exclusively deal with?
We're going to deal with that in a moment.
Okay.
Okay, so we'll just deal with that in a second. The clerk will qualify that. Any other comments with regard to other issues?
Re-apply.
Okay, well, Mr. Clerk, do you want to talk about that for a second? Or would you like us to wait till, wait for the?
Well, no, you have to approve it as part of this motion. I mean, what we got downstairs was that the province investigate location restrictions for clinics that exclusively deal with chemical dependency.
Counselor, get out of here.
Yes, Your Worship, that's partially correct. That deal with clinics that deal with chemical dependency drugs. It wasn't exclusive. This was going to be our way of, remember, we were worried that some would find a way around that, and they'd have one other service or one other product, so they'd be outside of the parameters of that jurisdiction, so restrictions on clinics that deal with chemical dependency drugs.
Okay, so noted. Okay, we'll call, Counselor Thompson, do you have a question?
Yeah, I don't really understand it. What is the motion?
Well, we had a resolution that we were going to approve with respect to the notice we're sending on page five, and this was an addendum after our discussion downstairs. Does anybody want to address that? Counselor DiDati, do you want to address that?
Yes, Your Worship, what we asked the province to do is two things, and the one, we'd already asked that we have public consultation, the second be that they put restrictions on locations of clinics that deal with chemical dependency drugs, so that it won't happen again like it did in Niagara Falls, where they wanted to locate it across from an elementary school. That's what we're asking for, Your Worship.
Maybe exclusively. You should add the word exclusively?
The reason we didn't want exclusively, Your Worship, is because originally it was suggested that we use exclusively, and it was pointed out by the clerk that that would be easy to circumvent by adding one extra service, and then they'd be outside of the parameters of that jurisdiction.
So what do you do with a general physician that prescribes a drug to a patient?
Well, what we're saying, this is what we approved downstairs, Your Worship, is that if they deal with chemical dependency drugs, that they, there'd be certain parameters where they can locate their clinic. If they choose to deal with that, then we would ask that it wouldn't be across, you know, certain restrictions such as across from an elementary school, Your Worship.
Then I think the question about enforceability comes forward, but Counselor Wing.
We did not come up with a solution downstairs largely because it seems to be out of our jurisdiction. Our staff did not feel comfortable with the idea of trying to find a way of requiring separation distances between these sorts of clinics and sensitive uses such as schools, daycares, places of worship, you know, and, you know, they were really leery of us being able to do that under the Planning Act. Yeah, we know a solution is needed. You know, a solution I'd heard from the public, and which you mentioned as well, was requiring that they be based out of hospitals. Well, hospitals are under provincial jurisdiction. We don't have the ability as a municipal council to require that. So what we're doing is throwing this can of worms at the province, which does have the jurisdiction, and saying, please, find a solution, so we aren't faced with a predicament which we were almost faced with recently, with a clinic of this sort locating directly across from a church and a school. Now, it's really beyond our jurisdiction to control, so we're asking the body, which can control it, to please do so.
Mr. Clerk?
No, that's fine. I think what we're really talking about is the difference between the word exclusively and drugs.
Okay, so do we have it, Pat?
Yeah, we've got it.
Okay, all those, Counselor Maves?
No, I just have a question with that, in that if we're going to have a resolution that should have some positive, some positive, more positive than the resolution we have. I'm looking at, I'm thinking, perhaps we've got an existing doctor's office who might be across the road from the school. All of a sudden, he decides to treat someone or gets this license, and then what do we do? Tell him to move? I mean, where are we going with this? I mean, I can't see how, no matter what we say and tell the province what to do, we're going to go back to square one with this anyway, and I don't see this resolution having much teeth in it.
Well, we did hear from our solicitor, and he was saying that that's very difficult to prove. We have to prove it. It's incumbent upon us, and it's very difficult to prove, and you have to subpoena records, which is probably something you're not going to get, so I can appreciate your point, Counselor Maves.
I just think the resolution is weak, and I don't know how to strengthen it.
I'm going to ask our solicitor to make a comment, if he would, please.
I do think that the only solution, if there is one, would have to come at the provincial The difficulty will always remain trying to define what it is you're trying to limit and trying to sort this particular aspect of medical practice from other aspects of medical practice. It's my understanding from some of the reading I did leading up to today that an awful lot of the, a growing amount of the people that are treated in these things are actually people that were given pain medications, and they aren't your traditional junkie-off-the-street type people. There are people that, because of the newer forms of pain medication have developed, are highly addictive, and they have to then be helped getting off the pain medication. So the, I think that the, if there is going to be a request made to the province, I think the wording suggested by Counselor DiDati is probably the safest thing. Saying exclusive is just going to make it impossible to get anything constructive, but the province would then have to define through medical terminology what the objection of land use actually is, and they would then be in a better position than anybody to enforce it because they would actually have access to the records that would be necessary to define the services provided. Hope that's helped the council.
Okay, well, now, we have the ratification of Community Services with a qualifier on the resolution. Okay, so are you satisfied with the wording of the resolution that we're going to approve when we pass the motion to approve the ratification of Community Services Committee actions? Everybody's happy with that? Okay, we'll proceed then. I'm going to ask for ratification of Community Services. Vote. All those in favor? Thank you very much. The motion is carried. Mr. Clerk, ratification of in-camera recommendations.
One item, Your Worship, that the city solicitor be directed to complete the transactions required to register the severances of the building rights created by instrument number 2904OB of the Land Registry Office of the Land Registry Division of Niagara South, number 59, to the owners of the lands that abut the rail lands.
Okay. Moved by Counselor Peter Ansel, seconded by Counselor Carrio. Once you've heard the question, all those in favor? Motion is carried. Oh, yes, conflict to be noted by Counselor, sorry, Counselor Inoney, Counselor Wing, and Counselor Thompson, correct? So all those in favor, again, please raise your hands. Motion is carried. Thank you. Okay, now, well, just before we, we're going to move on to bylaws, Mr. Clerk, actually, consent agenda. Consent agenda, would you like to take that in whole?
Sure.
Okay, excuse me, Counselor DiDati, do you have a question?
Yes, Your Worship, I'd just like to pull out, I just have a brief comment on M W 201061, the battlefield sculptures.
Yes.
I'm not opposed to the idea, my suggestion is this, that we delay doing that until 2012. I mean, that's what we wanted for the Battle of, right, 1812, and maybe we can delay till the spring of 2012.
Counselor Thompson.
Yeah, I have no problem with that, and that's appropriate, and it doesn't fulfill my original request. I was wondering if there could be something, first of all, that could, once they are cleaned, preserve them, and secondly, I asked if there was an opportunity to have them painted by the Art Association in a competition or whatever, with their cooperation in the period costumes could really make them stand out. I don't know whether that's possible or feasible, but I think that'd be great, if we could have a report back on that. We have lots of time.
Yes, I know you made that request, and I kind of got the impression after the report was they thought that we shouldn't paint them because they want to keep them natural, but just can anybody in staff speak to that?
Anyway, let's have a report back.
Okay, fine, we can do that, but I think that that was, I read that into it, I know that was your original request. Okay, let's refer that back to staff then. Motion to refer back to staff, moved by Counselor Thompson, seconded by Counselor Carrio. All those in favor? Motion is carried. On the balance of the items?
Move the rest of the agenda.
Moved by Counselor Carrio, seconded by Counselor Maves. All those in favor? Motion is carried. Thank you. Move on to bylaws. Mr. Clerk, are there any additional bylaws for council's consideration?
No, Your Worship, but in your handouts, I draw your attention to a couple of schedules to the bylaws. One is related to the Banner Bylaw, which outlines the BIA boundaries in the NCCC area, and the second is a schedule related to the bylaw related to Deerfield Estates.
Okay, so noted. So can I have a motion to introduce the bylaws? Bylaws, you have a first reading, moved by Counselor Peter Ansel, seconded by Counselor DiDati. Once again, council's heard the motion. Any comments or questions? Having seen none, all those in favor? Motion is carried. Thank you.
Bylaws 2010-149 to 2010-154, read a first time.
Okay, thank you. Can I have a motion to give the bylaws a second and third reading? Moved by Counselor Peter Ansel, seconded by Counselor DiDati. Once again, council's heard the question. Any comments? Having seen none, all those in favor? Motion is carried.
Bylaws 2010-149 to 2010-154, read a second and third time and passed.
Thank you. Move on to new business. Counselor DiDati?
Yes, Your Worship, just two quick items. One I brought to the attention of staff already. It's regarding the Gale Center, Your Worship. In the main rink, number one, along the west side of that rink, along the cement wall, it's been pointed out to me by staff that work in the arena that people have fallen on the cement steps because there's no railing. Staff, I did get a couple of phone calls and emails saying the other areas aren't required because of, it's a two-step and a plateau, and I understand that, but the situation there, there's nothing to lean, there's no chairs to lean on, it's wide open, and people have fallen already, and I think we're exposed to a liability, and we should at least maybe hear back. Staff, come back with a report on the idea of a railing there.
And I think C E O, the C E O was dealing with that already, he's heard some comments. Mr. Todd, do you want to elaborate on that?
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Part of that is some of the deficiencies that we're still working through. There are listed deficiencies that the contractor has to complete, and I believe that one railing is one of those deficiencies. So our contractor is working on that, so I'm not sure if you still want to report back, but we're already dealing with those railings.
Maybe that'd be a good idea, that we just get a list of the deficiencies, so instead of us, can we keep coming back to you with requests? Maybe you can just tell us that there, what's outstanding.
Well, we could certainly email that to council, let them know the deficiencies.
Okay, then Counselor Thompson, please.
On the same point, if you're walking at the south entrance of the building, I was walking along there in the weekend, and all of a sudden, I don't know why she did it, but my wife pulled me out of the way, because I was headed right towards all this piping and everything, and I had my head down, and extremely dangerous. So I don't know whether that's part of the deficiencies or not, but there should be some kind of railing or protection around that because you could walk right into it if you're not watching what you're doing.
Okay, and the clerk wishes to speak.
Yeah, last week, Mr. Castrilli, our chief building official, and Mr. McLean, who assists with the disability committee, also did an audit of the facility, so I'm sure there will be some rectifying of certain things related to accessibility as well.
Okay, so that matter's being dealt with. Counselor?
And one other thing, Your Worship, I spoke with staff about this as well in regard to our bylaw. I spoke with our planning department, that right now they're reviewing our signed bylaw, and that, and I would make the motion, Your Worship, that it be expanded to address non-signed areas, Your Worship, and as well, sign company representatives be invited to give feedback. Because, Your Worship, there's been some unique situations where signs are not permitted, but they should be, but they're unique and extenuating circumstances, they fall between the cracks, and it's a costly process for them to go through it. So I've already spoken with our planning staff, Your Worship, and they're with Mr. Hervovich, and he was comfortable and agreeable to the idea that if it happens now, while they're reviewing the signed bylaw, it'd make the most sense, and it would happen with the most expediencing.
And Counselor, I just want you to elaborate for the benefit of those non-signed areas being?
It's an area, it's in a residential area that's been commercialized.
Okay.
And it's been commercialized for almost 50 years, so it's not a new area, and it's an area where the business owner lives right next to his retail operation, and he would be the one that would be impacted if anybody were, Your Worship.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Thompson?
Yes, I've been dealing with similar issues with respect to the signed bylaw, and I'm wondering if at the same time, we could not, it's been a couple of years now since it's been approved, there are numerous concerns that have been brought to my attention through the sign business people. I'm wondering if there could be a general review of that signed bylaw with the industry involved, being invited specifically to have input with the changes, that there's some obvious things that should be reviewed, and I've dealt with the C E O on numerous occasions. I think that'd be a good time in the new year to move forward with that, to see if we can't make some appropriate changes that save time and is more acceptable to some of the people who are in the business.
Mr. Todd?
Mr. Mayor, just briefly, we have started that review. We've met with planning, and we are doing a review. We're going to engage the industry in that review, so with the new council, we'll have a report back on that, so that's already underway.
Okay, now, Counselor Wing.
Do you want to make a motion?
Yes, but do you want to still make a motion? It's being done? He just is?
Yeah, and it's already underway. Our staff have already met, we've already started to engage some of the industry, so I would expect we'd have a report back sometime in the new council with the new term.
Counselor, did you want to include the non-signed areas?
That may be something you want to add.
Yes, Your Worship, that's what I was looking at.
So you make that motion appropriate?
Yeah, I would make that motion, Your Worship, and also, and Mr. Hervovich had mentioned that if things go well, they may have this done by Christmas, which would be great. So, yeah, I'd make that motion, Your Worship, that non-signed areas be included in the review.
Okay, seconded by Counselor Peter Ansel, right? Further comments or questions? All in favor? Motion is carried. Thank you. Counselor Wing?
Thank you. I have a public service announcement on behalf of the Niagara Falls Humane Society. It's unfortunate that the tone of the recent media coverage of the revenue generation tool of dog license sales drive has become a bit controversial. The Humane Society recently resumed door-to-door dog tag sales after not doing so for many years. It's not, just to correct the misconceptions out there, it is not a compliance-based initiative. This is a fundraising initiative, and the licensing revenues are absolutely vital to being able to sustain our No Kill initiative. The sales drive is intended to support us in being a no-kill shelter. When the Niagara Falls Humane Society Board voted in 2009 to become a no-kill shelter, this was the first community in the Niagara region to do so, so we are leading the way. And what no-kill means is we are setting aside the failed kill-based practices of the past, when we euthanized healthy, adoptable animals simply because we didn't have space. It's a philosophy, and the philosophy is that the killing can and should be brought to an end, and the goal is getting to zero. No-kill shelter, just to do a little bit more education, it still euthanizes in cases of suffering, or where an animal's brought in really badly sick or badly injured, or falls badly out of the shelter and is clearly more of under, or suffering badly, but the idea is don't kill simply because of lack of space. It's a much bigger, it's part of a much bigger problem in the community, and no-kill shelters try to end the killing by increasing the demand for shelter animals, which is why we were so happy to have the partnership with Niagara Square and the Cat Adoption Center there, and of course, you know, if you haven't been to the shelter in recent years, we don't have the cage-based rooms, we have free-roamed cat rooms where members of the public can come and interact with their prospective pets and get to know them, and those have proven really popular as well. So it's increasing the demand for shelter animals while reducing the number of animals born, and we do hope to have that be a neuter facility that the Humane Society's working on up and running by the end of this year, and it's unfortunately a very costly initiative. We have some savings, our cremation fees go down, but our veterinary expenses go up, so it is a costly initiative, and licensing funds are absolutely vital to sustaining it, and yes, we do have the city bylaw which requires all dog owners to annually purchase a tag, but it really hasn't been enforced at all in recent years. And this is not about enforcing it, it's about raising money. The proceeds will be going to a good cause, and there are benefits as well for the dog owner. The tags help to identify lost dogs effectively and reunite them with their families as quickly as possible. It's a lost dog's ticket home. We also strongly encourage all dog owners to not only buy the license and have it on the collar at all times, but to also microchip their pet. Tattooing doesn't work. Tattoos can fade, and, you know, we had that one problem last year where there was a dog with a tattoo brought into the shelter, but it was illegible, and the dog was adopted out. Fortunately, it was eventually reunited with its original owner. So we do encourage microchipping as an additional measure to identify lost pets. The dog license cost is $40 for an unaltered dog, so if you haven't had your pet spayed or neutered, it's 40. If you have had your dog spayed or neutered and you have the certificate, it's 20. The dog licenses can be purchased at the shelter, the adoption center at Niagara Square, City Hall, Pet Value, Paul Max Global Pets, Bridgewater Animal Hospital, and Wolfenview. The door-to-door sales drive is totally self-funded. We're not hiring new staff. We're not using existing staff. They are stretched to the max as it is, looking after the animals. It's, the compensation of the sellers is totally commission-based, and the proceeds are going entirely to supporting the work of the Humane Society and maintaining that no-kill approach, which has proven so popular in the community. We're still looking for more people to sell the tags. Questions can be directed to the Humane Society, and I think I'd ask the clerk to comment on this matter as well.
Just if I can qualify, Counselor, you're speaking as a member of the Humane Society and not as a member of council, correct?
I am the council rep to the Humane Society Board.
But as you're saying, we are talking about Humane Society?
Yes, the Humane Society Board, which I work in collaboration with on behalf of council.
Good. Mr. Clerk?
I'd just remind council of a couple of things. As you recall, you commissioned a report a number of years ago, the Bandow Report, and the Bandow Report identified the fact that there's probably about 2,500 dogs in the community that are licensed, while there's probably anywhere between 9,000 and 15,000 dogs in the community. And this issue also came up last year when the Humane Society came to council for various financial requests, and council directed back to the Humane Society that it's in their best interest to obviously maximize the number of licenses that are purchased in this community. So what they're doing is really following council's directive to try to maximize the number of licenses that are sold in this community. Calvary did something similar a number of years ago, and they went from a compliance rate of about 10% up to 80%. And, you know, as mentioned, last year when we brought forward the report that increased the fees, our fees are still less than any other municipality in the region.
And, Mr. Clerk, and members of council, we did receive calls last week and some emails with regard to the door-to-door activities of the Humane Society. I did address them to the clerk, and, Mr. Clerk, do you just want to qualify the issue once again from the city's perspective and the fact that we contract for services with the Humane Society, and we are not the Humane Society, but that this matter, people are asking about whether or not these amounts are prorated, or is this a donation? Could you just qualify that once again, please, in the enforceability aspect?
Well, your fees are, as Counselor Wing indicated, they were the fees that this council approved last year. You approve the licensing fees, and there's been an arrangement with the Humane Society for a number of years that all licensing revenues goes back to them. So it's a way for them, obviously, to maximize licensing revenues and not have to request